City of Oconomowoc Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesdays, October 7th, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
It has, Your Honor.
If you would please call roll.
Alderman Ellis?
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Here.
Alderman Mulder is excused. Alderman Shellpepper?
Here.
Alderman McConnell?
Here.
Alderman Youngworth?
Here.
Alderman Rosick?
Here.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Here.
Great, we have several items on our Committee of the Whole Meeting before our regular council meeting at 7:30. If you'd like to speak at the Beginning Section, which is about the discussion of the city green improvements downtown, please fill out a blue card. Jason Gallo is walking around, please fill out a blue card and he'll get those to me. When, after we do a presentation about where the status of where we are with the city green, then I'll call your name, have you come up to the podium, and we'd love to have some lively discussions on your thoughts for the city green. So, Mr. Herzog, let's get started, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. As people funnel in here, I'll kind of just bring us up to speed and try to give us a quick background. I know many of you joined in our public information meeting last week at the Community Center for the Village Green, the discussion of it, very similar style and presentation that we gave a year and a half ago in June of 24, to collect ideas and comments for the project that we're looking at here. A little update this past week for what we presented last week. So, I've got all sorts of renderings and images that many of you have already seen. If there's anything specific you'd like to talk about, I can reference those in going through, but we did share the entire project with the community over, I don't know, two and a half hours last week, two hours. So I thought it was good time and time well spent. We gave a presentation and offered time to answer questions. So, you know, we described a lot of the conflicts of the current parks, some of the improvement areas that we have been looking at and discussing this period of time, and kind of some of the images of the new park without the pavilion on the last project. So, very similar concept here. We are discussing and kind of considering bathrooms in this darker brown shaded area, number four, that would be adjacent to that private business and building. Another little small piece is there's additional seating that's added in this concept and thought here. You can kind of see the image overlaid on the existing property. Tried to demonstrate how there's a smaller circle currently out there, and this is kind of the project objective here would be to push the sidewalk as far out to the park limits as we could, so that we could bring the grass area more in the middle and take advantage of some of the connection points there. So, real quick, some of the main focus and priorities that we were looking at was to take some of the similar concepts that we had seen in some of our previous projects, the boardwalk, this area right in the corner of Fowler Lake is a very similar concept that we were looking, we did at Rockwell Park. Concrete stairs down to the lake, some riprap or rock buffering that area. This would be open, no railing. This would be something to supplement, maybe sitting, walking, possibly dog entrance or exit. So, you kind of see some of the same concepts as we have on the downside of the dam. Some renderings that show our park, as we've been discussing, slightly updated the images so that we could get the bathrooms, as we've been discussing, on the corner of the building, extra seating alongside there, all kinds of options here, as I'll kind of share some of the ideas of improving the side of the et cetera building. One of the challenges here was working with two different architects to try to bring together these thoughts. Lot of the improvements you've seen, kind of the gateway at the four corners with our flag and sitting area, the north end, this is what's much different, is there's no pavilion or stage, bathrooms on the north end, the parking lot is being proposed to just get replaced, as is parking stalls, very similar to what we've seen, take some, take advantage of some of the sidewalk and area in here, as some of you have seen in our, you know, previous events, this would be a great spot to, just to keep flat, offer up this to be the stage setup for some of the events, beer gardens, whatnot. Still have the parking lot for accessibility on bringing the beer trucks in for the beer gardens or German Christmas market dumpsters. There's an area we've kind of considered for porta potties, those types of things. Try to take some of the concepts that we did on our first project on the, on the south side here with the pergola. This is kind of sitting on the existing boardwalk, looking back into the park. On the left, you'll see, you know, the idea of a bathroom setup there. Minimal design here, just to try to give you perspective.
Are we allowed to ask a quick question?
Sure, go for it.
Jason, are we going to try to match the boardwalk style, like as far as the decking? Is it going to be a very similar color?
That's what we had proposed.
And are we going to do the McDonald colors for the seating in the outcrops? Or are we going to try to do something more subdued in the outcrops?
Are you talking about like the anoronic chairs and the furniture? So I've gotten, I mean, I've gotten feedback about the color scheme down there along the boardwalk.
Yeah.
Many people have liked that. I haven't heard much different. The variety of coloring in the furniture, it's not part of the project, but I mean, the idea is that we would look to probably continue that, unless there's a different thought. Just some different images, we can always go back to this, just kind of wanted to show you where we're at, this kind of just exposes some of the park improvements from a variety of different perspectives. And then I'm just going to quickly reiterate some of this, if you will, this is the current owners of, you know, the occupant tenants of the building for, that's et cetera. Their exterior wall is here in white, this is the existing door that they use on their west side of their building, south, north side of their building here. These are the stairs going up to the rooftop that's in place right now. The owners are proposing some enclosure of that staircase going to the rooftop and then bathrooms going on the outside of those walls. Just to give you reference, this is kind of the line, I just highlighted their, their drawing to show where our trash enclosure is right now. So you can kind of see the footprint of the proposed area. This is the curb that we have in the park right now, it goes right up to the door, so you can see there's a little bit of the proposed 16-foot bathrooms that would protrude roughly about half of that into the park. And then this would be open on the two sides, supported by the pillar here. Any questions on that?
I have a general statement to make. I appreciate the time and effort that you've put into this, and I think it's very detailed. Thank you, thank you for that. My concern is and has always been with looking at projects like this, looking at, like for instance, the last project that we did, which was a beach bungalow project, okay? I and probably a lot of other individuals are more visual, are more touchy-feely, and looking at a 2D image such as this is not really giving me the ability to understand what it's actually going to look like in that footprint. And I know we do have things such as 3D printers. What is the likelihood of you putting this, or even whatever the final might be, into a 3D printer, so that we can visually see it, touch it, feel it, look at it to spec, and say, oh, this makes sense? Because I will tell you that if I knew that that beach bungalow was going to be that big, I might have voted differently, or at least said, can we reduce it?
Another approach, Kevin, maybe that might be a little more practical and more visual, is just to stake it out or do some spray paint or some things out in the village green area, so you can tell your constituents, hey, this is, this is the location of how that would look. That's also a possibility as well, so I'll leave it, send it back to Jason.
Kind of, sort of on that note, I know when we had conversations in the past, this was a couple of years ago, about Village Green, you know, there was concern about, you know, were we losing, you know, accessible space on Village Green? And I think it was Craig Hepner at the time had given us like a percentage of, or square footage, that we were actually kind of gaining, especially when we were getting rid of like the rain garden, the rain gardens, is that what it's called?
Yep, yep.
You know, like when we get rid of that, you know, because I know there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, like the bathroom, I've, you know, I've seen online that we're losing, we're losing visibility to the lake. Well, really, when you think about it, when we get rid of those rain gardens, we're actually gaining a ton of visibility to the lake. So I don't know if you have those numbers, because I know, like, and I remember originally, I was concerned on that side of the building about if we were to give up seating right there, you know, are we losing part of Village Green? But then I walked back over there and remind, you know, right now it's
Garden.
It's just a garden, so we're not losing really anything, I mean, unless we'd like lease it to something.
Yep, that makes total sense. I tried to put numbers to some of this, the whole park is under 60,000 square feet, and if you measure up the space that we can actually use and sit down is roughly 30,000, the new park is very, very close to that.
Okay.
And I would need to know, like, what are we changing before I could totally answer that, but it's really close, as I kind of wanted, that's why I kind of wanted to show, there we go, show this to, to share, like, you know, we've got more concrete over here, but that's, like you said, that's garden right now. So you're reducing some of that garden area, but the grass is coming, the clogs that we're coming up with are very, very close to an offset number.
And just, you know, and just for the, you know, the few people that are watching, if you were down there for the 9/11 memorial, when they played taps over at the Episcopal Church, you could not see it because of how tall the rain garden weeds were. So, I mean, the visibility to the lake right now is nothing.
So, I understand the concept, and when I see it here, we're absolutely getting more green space, there's no argument there. But are we really? And what does that look like? And how is that visually going to look when it's all said and done, when it's too late? What is the bathroom? Okay, so I'm looking at the bathroom right over here, okay? When I'm at, I don't know, it would be kind of to the left, right there, right, okay? How is that visually, how am I going to be able to see the lake from there? Can I see the lake from there? Is that going to be too much?
This is tucked in a little bit, but I don't know if this gives you a little perspective from like the eye height, looking to the west on the sidewalk, looking to the north to the lake. This would be, I didn't have enough time to get this all cut out, but the rooftop decking, I mean, if you can see that, but
See, and that's, that's the thing, I mean, I, like I said, I think you did a phenomenal job on this, but having that ability to visually see what the final product could look like.
So again, this is the park engineering that I'm working with.
Right.
I have the other renderings from the
My question.
If that would help.
My question is, can you get a 3D version of this? I'm almost certain, because I've done it, the high school would help us out.
I think I understand
Yeah, I'm not a 3D expert, and I don't know what it would take to produce something like that.
I'm almost certain the high school would help us out.
What time that would, how much time that would take?
Not much at all, not even an hour.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not
But why don't we have, we'll, we'll investigate that option, so what you're requesting is a 3D little plan that you, on a board?
Correct, on, on a board.
Okay.
Right, and you can put it right there, we can look at it, we can visualize it, we can see it, we can touch it, we can feel it, oh, that's a little too big, we can't see that, or, oh, that's excellent, or, can we move that over a little bit? This way, now we're talking about something that at the end of the day, when it is built, we're not surprised.
Can I ask and try to find
We'll, we'll check on it.
If you'd like, I can check on it too, this way, it's not taking any time from you guys.
While we have these two guys see if there's anything we can do internally quickly, because we will be coming together in another two weeks, hopefully to say, okay, do we want to move a direction? But it's really completely up to you, counsel, if it needs to be postponed, it needs to be postponed. I hear what you're saying, I, everyone sees things different ways, and it's not something that I would want to do, or I'd spend the money to do personally, based on everything that's been done before, but we can look into it if that would help the rest of the council happy to, happy to look into it. Let's see what it costs.
Is this the layout we want to model?
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, that's, that's one of the other things, the purpose of these meetings was to get comments and, and then try and decide, you know, what are we looking to move forward with, these bathrooms, no bathrooms, you know?
Right, and that, and I want to thank you very much for, for hearing me out.
Mm-hmm.
I do appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we'll try, I just have to look into it.
And just out of curiosity, if this was too expensive, Kevin, or like, they weren't able to get it done, would it help if Jason gave you like a percentage of like concrete to grass currently, and then with the finished product, what the concrete to grass is?
I've, I've actually walked it already.
Okay.
Okay, and I still, I visually, you know, I
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's almost like somebody is going to get glasses, and so instead of trying them on, they kind of draw a stick figure of what they could look like, oh, I like those, and you put them on, you go, ooh, that doesn't look so good. Okay, so, all I'm saying is that if we can visually see something, touch it, feel it, okay? I, I would really appreciate that.
Kevin, and while they're investigating that, and if they potentially can't make that happen, I like the mayor's idea of going out there and staking out
I've already walked
where everything is, you'd be able to see how much is coming off of each wall, what it's looking like around the corner.
I took a Sunday, I took a Sunday after church.
Yeah.
And
But you didn't have anything staked out at that point.
16 feet, and then I looked, and then I kind of, but still, I just visually, it's just me, okay? If you guys don't want to do it, I respect that, absolutely.
Well, let's look into it as an option, and then Jason, Mark and I'll talk about a way to make it visual, so people can walk down there and they can see where that footprint is, and then that way, there's at least one additional tool maybe for people to say, hey, this is what I see, or maybe it's not that big, or it's too big, you, you have that ability, so.
I think the public would like that too, I think they would be able to visually see
Yeah, they could do that. It all comes down to the level of trust you have in the renderings, or the modeling, or anything on the scale factor. So it definitely takes some skill and expertise to do that. I'll share some of the architects' 3D renderings here that I think most of you have already seen, just so that the thought kind of gets exposed a little bit more, as they've offered to, you know, kind of produce some of this Oliver Construction, that is, for the, the building owners. You know, there's definitely more detail that could be applied here, there could be more accurate ideas that go inside of a, a 3D modeling, they might have more capabilities even beyond this, you know, to, to your point of, you know, would that help demonstrate some of the, the 3D options in being able to see the whole park rather than maybe just a corner of it like we're seeing here? You know, so that would be another thing, producing a, a physical 3D modeling might be something, I, I have no idea, I've never, I've seen them done, but they all come down to like, how much trust do you have in that individual or those individuals on putting that to scale?
I could, I could be stepping out, but I know that when I wanted to get a 3D model done, I went to the high school. I gave him a picture of what I was looking for, and two hours later, I got a phone call stating it was done.
Okay.
And I went and I picked it up. I could always bring it to you, so you see exactly what it looks like, I can do that tomorrow.
Or we could just touch base with the group that you worked with and say, these are the things we have, what, you know, what do you, what do you need to make whatever, you know, you had made?
Right, so what, what I will do, if that's okay, that's okay, what I will do tomorrow, I have a few free moments, is I'll show you what they did for me.
Okay.
And then if, if you guys like it, whatever, then you can go forward with that, or at least look into it, is that okay?
I'm all about trying to do as much legwork as we can in the beginning here, because this is the cheaper part.
Right, 100%.
Us talking?
Yes.
So once we start to make decision, then, then it turns into different
Thank you for hearing me out.
So yeah, I mean, just to continue this thought here, and then I'll, I'll let it open to the public here and make a comment and share any of your, you know, feedback you've received from your constituents, so. Any questions, I mean, does anybody, you guys have seen a lot of this stuff already, the public, just for their information that this has been shared with, you know, the, the body here.
Is there still interest from the owner of the et cetera building to keep exploring this partnership?
Yes.
Okay.
That's confirmed. The question was in, is, is there still an interest of the people that own the building to continue to explore this option? And yes, there is.
But I didn't get a real chance last week to, to share this exhibit here, this just kind of demonstrates the existing footprint of the German Christmas market. This can be moved around a variety of different ways, I think I just showed this so that it, you know, can demonstrate that it fits on the site, we can move it up, they typically load their beer right here in these trucks, so these can kind of get positioned.
Really important, it's very critical, we can get the beer trucks in there. Very critical, let's not screw that up.
I was more worried about those poor shrubs or bushes, like
Don't worry about the shrubs.
Don't worry about the shrubs, we're talking about the beer here.
If we got to run over the shrubs to get the beer trucks in for German Christmas market, that's pretty great.
Continue on, Jason.
I, I don't, I don't think I can speak for all the German Christmas market folks, but I did sit next to Sharon Manke at the first listening session at the Community Center, and I said, what are you, what are your initial thoughts? And they like it, you know, at least she did, from the German Christmas
Yeah, we've tried to consider them throughout the process. I'm not showing all of the electrical improvements, but the, the idea, I think you could, you could totally understand, is we're just trying to put some underground connection points for them to plug in, so that we don't have a million extension cords and
Money everywhere.
You know, temp services and all those kinds of ideas, so there's a considerable amount of money inside this project right now that's being proposed to help an event like this and our other ones too. So this is, again, just some of these things, I did add this next week, I'll meet with our, you know, another time or opportunity to share with the public at the library during the daytime hours. If you ever have a question, you know, for constituents that can't make any of the nighttime ones, that's, that's available. We do have a webpage on, underneath the Parks Department for this, I try to update some of the things that we have going on here, the presentations, the dates, those types of things, you can share out, if you need a link, let me know. So, right now, I'll, you guys can ask me questions, or we could just open it up to the public, okay? Let me, I'll just go back to a general
And one thing too, counsel, there's a frequently asked question type sheet that's on the website, I think you're, you're all aware of it, but there may be questions you're getting that we didn't think about, please fire those questions to Jason, myself and Mark, and then we'll work with Paige to update even the FAQ questions, because a lot of times people have questions, or they have misinformation, we want to make sure that there's clarity in what goes on. So, we're going to have people come up, and you can share your viewpoint with the council, we'd like to keep it around three minutes if possible, but what's most important is that you can share your viewpoint about this project, so not other projects in the city, only the, this, the city green area. I'll give you, I'll call your name, if you haven't filled out a blue card to speak, please see Jason, and we'll get some more blue cards out to you, and please stand up at the podium, and because we're recording, we, you know, there are people that aren't able to attend, please speak right into the microphone, so everyone can hear and we can put it on our website. So we'll start with Jean Wangard.
Good evening. I just was hoping tonight would be a little bit more conversational than a regular council meeting, so I'm coming in with that agenda, okay? My background, I live at 707 West Glenview in Merchants Platt, I have a background in corporate consulting for large corporations, I'm also currently an investment professional, portfolio manager. There's no doubt, when I look at projects like this, I'm like, what is the purpose in what we're trying to achieve, okay? So I want to understand, what do we need? Are we trying to supply bathrooms for the whole of downtown Oconomowoc? Are we trying to supply a couple bathrooms for people who use the park occasionally? Because obviously, we've already established that there wouldn't be enough bathrooms for big events, like the Harvest Festival and the German Festival. So I've never really seen what we're trying to achieve. So, are we, is two bathrooms enough for, for the women, for instance, like there is at the park? Why are we doing four in this type of space? I just wish we back up a little bit and say, what do we really need? My husband and I were out walking after we had pizza, and we did use the bathrooms at the beach, and it was about 12 o'clock at night, fortunately, they're open right now. Are we going to have these available for bar time? Because there obviously is a need down there. So I think we really need to look at what we're trying to achieve, and not just plunk this here, and because of that, we might be able to scale back what we're trying to do. As I go through this, I want to say, what is that bigger plan? We've got some extra space here, nobody knew there was a porta potty at Fowler Beach until we all went down and sat at the tables down there one night. So, and we also didn't know there was a playground there, we thought, can we do something with this green for children? So we're not talking about beer and bars, but we're making it a family urban park. So I really hope that everybody will back off on the bars and the beer, we love that in Wisconsin, but this is also for our community, okay? Then I'm going to interject here on our disappointment with Buddy's bungalow, Buddy's bungalow, that the devil is in the details there. We all sit now in our boats, cannot see the band show. We sit at the front row, cannot see the lake. I just want to make sure we have checkpoints as we're doing these projects, so when things start getting strange, or they're going over budget, we stop and think about the long-term impact of this, because it, it is kind of a slap in the face when we sit at Buddy, at the, the band, and we look at this wonderful balcony, and we can't use it. It's kind of like coach and you can't buy first class. So, we have a building on public land with a balcony that we can't use, but blocks our view. Let's be cautious here, and as I have put some comments out on, in a, we'll try to be very professional, we don't need another lake overlook that is only available to the business that's running it. It's a beautiful setting, and we need to preserve that, this isn't that big a space, and anybody that goes to the German market understands it, because it's hard, right? I do respect your comment on the 3D rendering, those are easy to get, we can understand the scale, this is deceiving because it does not show the tower on the top, and the tower is going to really block the view from a lot of different angles. So let's get the 3D rendering, let's just be careful here, and can we reduce the size? There's a couple other things, and again, I'm only using time here, because I didn't assume this was going to be that formal, so please allow me. The, the TIF, okay? We're looking at the budget, and I'm assuming, I did not take the time to understand where that TIF money overage is coming from, and I'm assuming it was for downtown Oconomowoc. Little background, I grew up on one of the Genesee Lakes here, born and bred here, so I have a, a real heart for Oconomowoc, even though I left for 25 years. But what else could we be doing with that money? Is that only needed for this? That's a lot of excess money, is that what we need to use this for? Or are bathrooms a utilitarian thing? Or are bathrooms a utilitarian thing? And then I am concerned about getting, again, in line with a business owner. And we all have different experiences with the business owners in Oconomowoc. Some like them, some don't. We all have, please respect. That not everybody has the same opinion of every business owner here and our experience are different. So we may not like an arrangement with a business that other people do. Please respect that. And so do we really want to be so integrated with a business owner? Or can we have these bathrooms be there? What's in it for the city? I was trying to understand the leasing of this and the financial aspect of it. I don't see the staircase going up as it is here. But again, if there is an expansion into public space, which I believe is what the landlord's benefiting from here. Maybe we sell it to them and get some money out of this. Or we actually have to get some better revenue because we're giving up public space. I don't understand where the garbage bins are. We've all walked back there and like, yikes. The other thing I will say is that the building's blighted right now. And we're gonna have to put some real good controls on the, on the landlords here, and I hopeful, to make it look as pretty as these renderings. Because you go out there, you see into their kitchen, there's a lot of things that could have been improved already that have not been. Why not? Does it take this to get a landlord to fix a building that's on our beautiful village green? And if they do put access, I would suggest it be a takeout window. So that Bela Gusta and all the other businesses down there also can serve on takeout there. That's public land. So if we put chairs in front of their garage doors, their building, which we all hope they will do, which they can do without this project. Make sure it's open to all the businesses in downtown. So I think that those are my points. Again, I want to see, my number one is that that balcony should be public. Don't make this a slap in the face for all of us who would love to go up and see this beautiful view. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Laura Gibbs.
Laura Gibbs, 908 West LeBau Avenue in Oconomowoc, as the city. I think everyone here probably knows how I feel about this project. I'm not real happy about it at all. My really biggest, I, I have.
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit more? I'm sorry, Laura.
So, and, and I think that everyone wants to get it right. I think that everybody here has worked on bathrooms for years and years and years. And really wants to just get, you know, be done with it. But I think we also want to get it right. I think that the city has grown a lot. And as it grows, as we saw with the Fall Festival, we expanded into that back lot. I think that's an excellent way to expand the city property and lot. But when I look at like the reviews that are out there, I see a lot of negative reviews. I do not see the positive reviews. And if you're seeing them, please let me know where they are, because, you know, some people will just say, oh yeah, go for it, or this, or that, or whatever. But I don't think these people are really putting a lot of thought into, what does this actually mean for the city? And I think that just because, I mean, there were, there was a proposal for bathrooms, I believe, in that spot before this proposal. And I don't know what happened to that. I know you don't answer questions right now, but I'm curious to that. And I think that just because a proposal is brought by a business, that the city should have no problem saying, we're not interested in this. Thanks a lot. And I think that's, that's what the city should do in this situation. I think the rain gardens are there. If those go away, if they're not a purpose for it, I agree with what you say, Jennifer, that will open that space up. But this great big wall, 38 feet long and 16 feet out, it is hard to imagine. And I do think we should mark the sidewalk where it would be, but I don't, I don't think there's a need for the, the public and the private. We don't need two stories. So why are we building two stories? Is it because they'll pay for, for one story? I mean, I, I don't know that. I don't know how the city benefits from that. But I, Jennifer, at one point you made a comment, you know, you've always been against giving public property to private businesses and citizens. You said that, I think it was when Jason spoke on September 16th. And I agree with you. I don't think that the city should give anything to anyone. I think that, you know, they say fences make great neighbors, and I'm not suggesting a fence. But I'm saying cities should do city property, businesses should do business property. And I'm wrapping it up. I think the cost rule is where, how things are going to get paid for. I appreciate that. But I, the question that I have is how the business partnership is supposed to be structured, if that's what you choose to do. Because I think that really is important. I think that's where Buddies went way astray. I think, I don't know about Rockwell, but. I don't think that we need the proposals because that generates more expense. And we have a pretty good idea from my understanding from the, the other bathrooms and stage that were being proposed there. So we have a good idea that we're following between that 2.5, 3.5 or 3.6, whatever. So I, I feel like let's not generate more costs. And I really think, someone said, I think it was you, Sarah, at the open meeting, which I like the open feed, open. Feedback forum type thing, because I think it gets, I think what I say is important, but what all of you say is really important too. And you guys weren't part of that conversation there. And I would like, because of your experience and background and knowledge of the city, I would really think that the whole city could benefit from your experience and input. And from what I've heard is, you don't want to give away private, you know, public lands. I don't either. I think also the city has not adequately talked about the partnership or how that would be put together. I have been swayed that we do need bathrooms. I think we determined if we only needed three at Fowler Park for, you know, 1,000 to 2,000 people. Then why are we doing four and three? I think we could do a lot smaller. And I think if the city managed it as a city project by itself, it would go smoother. It would be. And, and the, and the people in the, in the town would be happy. Oh, the other thing I was saying is the garbage. Well, what you said in your handout was that it's going to be somewhere in that back lot. I believe that it is now, is all city property. I'm wondering, do they, do they pay, is that leased property to them? Or is the city just saying, I mean, when the city was so small, I understand where they would say, okay, you have a need for this, that's fine. But the way it is now, it's not so small and it's growing. We need the space. So I think putting the garbage in the lot is not a good idea. I think if it can be at one end on the leased part of the lot by where May's Garden was, it should be on private party, on private property. Also, just looking at this restaurant, there is a lot of space in the back of that restaurant. And they have a very good architect who maybe could propose some kind of change to their building where they could have their garbage on their own property. I wouldn't let my neighbors store garbage on my property. I know that. Would you? I know you don't answer my questions, but I, I think it's just bad form. So I also think bathrooms, Sarah, you said people, five to seven people came in a week to use the chamber. So I think if we did something closer to Oz Parks, Oz Plaza, it would serve that part of downtown, this part of downtown. And it would also be a, the city doing it, not with a partner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. I have two more cards, so we'll go through those as well. And then council, my thought would be if you, there have been some questions that have been posed and some comments, some of these are your constituents. If you want to make comments about anything that's been said to try to get it to be a little more interactive in this forum, it's a little different than it was at the community center, then maybe that would help as well. So next up, Sarah Nindman.
Good evening, Sarah Nindman, Director at the, at the Chamber of Commerce of Community Events. Well, I just wanted to give you guys some feedback from my standpoint, not only being at our last meeting at the community center, but starting to really work downtown. Over the next two weeks before our next meeting, I would really like to bring you some feedback from the businesses on this specific plan. So I'm gonna spend the next two weeks of my time walking around, talking to all the business owners in somewhat of a petition form, so that you guys can see how they feel. And what their words are and what they're saying. I can't get everybody here. They're, they're, they've, they've tried to come, they're, a majority of them are in, in favor of it. People think that they've, they've already, should have been built, but I want to bring their words to you. So I'm, I'm gonna bring it in a little bit better of a format so that you guys can see that. But in the meeting that I was at, a couple of things that I want to point out. One, I was very surprised that overall, people are very protective of this event space downtown. We're seeing it a little bit on social. Again, I don't, I don't take social as the barometer of all of this. But being out in the community and talking, people value the events here. It's why they're moving here. It's why they're staying here. It's why they're partaking here. It's why they want to open businesses here. It's why they want to bring their kids downtown. So I was really surprised that we didn't have a ton of feedback of people wanting to build it like an urban space. I never know, but I keep asking people, do they, would they rather have this used 347 days out of the year as their space? But people really want to protect this as their event space, which is what brought us to here. And we've kind of ridden this hamster wheel over the last eight years that we've been talking about restrooms. And this is how we've ended up making a restroom downtown that we've all agreed unanimously at times that we have needed restrooms downtown. Now, it's differentiating how they're gonna look, where, how we're gonna pay for them, you know, all the different things. But we have agreed that there is a need for downtown to take the burden off of the businesses. Not only that, it's not just about taking a burden, but it's also about enhancing our town. We are bringing people here. We take pride, all of us take pride. And our businesses here, you guys take pride in your parks and your land. We want people to come here and we basically can give them the basic services of restrooms. When I say that five to seven, five to 10 people come into the chamber office to use the restroom, that's if they make it all the way down. I mean, there are a lot of people that enjoy the boardwalk, the lake at all times of the year. And they are looking for a restroom that is open year round. And also that we can use when, at the, at the height of our daily walkers and, and patrons that are coming down here. And right now, we are, when people ask if you do not have a facility that they can come into, because many of our businesses have bathrooms that are in the basement. We are pointing them specifically a lot to the Roots and et cetera buildings or using the Avenue Square as another benchmark. And, and I don't feel that that's fair to those businesses, that we are pushing that public restroom out of our businesses and into, into theirs, that they have to absorb that. But I was surprised that people are very protective. I chose to sit down with a couple of people that I knew that were making comments on social media. Called them out, had coffee with them. And a lot of people thought from the rendering that the village green was going to be smaller than what it was. When we sat down, showed them the overlay, had a conversation about that. I feel like many of those people, I sat, sat down with a handful and I will continue to sit down with more. That they, again, just didn't want that to shrink. They wanted to know that the events that I run, that German Christmas market that Sharon runs. That it was going to be doable and that we weren't put in a position to compromise that event. People cared about that. And when I sat down and was able to talk to them about that, they were at ease about it. And they very much were appreciative that there would be restrooms, that the village green would be cleaned up a little bit. They liked the lighting that was underneath the seats. They liked that there was an additional seating. But they did like that the green space stayed open and available for the events. So I just wanted to give you guys some of that feedback as I pound the pavement out there and I continue to talk about this. If there's something more that I can do, or specifically that I can do to sit down with any businesses, I'm happy to do it. But by the time we meet in two weeks, I'd really like to give you guys a little bit of a numbers, a little statistics to say, hey, these businesses are for it. And maybe I'll find out that some aren't, but maybe some verbiage from them.
Great, thank you. Holly Schick.
Good evening. I'm Holly Schick. I live at 702 West Glenview Avenue. I have lived in Oconomowoc in the same house for 39 years. Must be time to move. I don't know. No, I'm not doing that. There are many things, speaking to the plan, there are many things that I really like. Thank you so much for keeping, I, I won't know how to do this to get back to it, but keeping the parking, that I think is really necessary. Some of you know, my husband is quite disabled and it's important to be able to have a parking spot. I also realize he will, I, he, we will not be able to park there during German market. So something else is going to have to be done. But before I get too far into, and another thing that I really like is the connection of how it basically takes better advantage of Fowler Lake. But before I get too far, I need to say that I'm pretty old fashioned because I've worked for many architectural firms. I'm a designer and when an important project happened, we built models. They were built out of cardboard. They had little trees. Everything was to scale. And the owners, just as you were asking for, Kevin, was that you could see what it was. You could touch it. You could feel it. It was in scale. Scale is really important. And I'm not going to go over the other project that I think is really in poor scale and doesn't work. But I need to start by saying that I'm not in favor of public and private partnerships. I think we have a poor track record. On this one, the costs and separation of the financial responsibilities, also the financial gain or not gain. I don't find that they're well-defined. I've read this many times. I've been on the website. I was at the last meeting as well. And I'm still not clear. There are several, several things that are not clear to me on that. I want to know, is the city paying for overruns? If there are more overruns, things we didn't expect. Can people just come back and get money to pay for that? As proposed, the toilet rooms are being built on what is public land. They will be used by the public, which is great. And from everything I can tell from the drawings, they appear to be ADA compliant. The deck, however, would also be built on the same public land. It's up another story. But that is public land until it is sold, rented, or some agreement comes on. But it is public land. And those, the seating that is up there, as proposed, we don't see it in this picture, are not ADA accessible. Many, many people could not get up that stairway and they could not use that space. This is dear to my heart and it really upsets me that that is not ADA compliant and it is public land owned by Oconomowoc. The last thing that I'd like to talk about is the trash. That whole area, that is public land. I've walked it just this week to see where those dumpsters could be relocated. And it's going to have to also be on public land. I couldn't see that there was any private land behind those buildings. It is either going to take up parking spaces or it's also going to be on city land. So those are some of the things that I would like to see developed better and that I would like to understand better before we would go ahead with this. I think, as it's been said earlier, the devils are in the detail. And I absolutely believe that. I believe there needs to be transparency and I think some of the questions asked tonight need to be answered. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Holly. I don't believe I have any other blue cards. Does anybody else want to make a comment?
I want to comment on, and appreciate the Chamber of Commerce coming forward. I want to make sure that we're talking, we're separating a design of these buildings and the size of this with the need. We all agree there's a need, but that doesn't mean this is going to be the, the solution. Let's get the downtown bathrooms. Like I said, my husband and I needed them the other night. We were walking out and we're like, where are we gonna go? Make sure they're open 24/7. Not everybody goes to bed at 10 o'clock around here, okay? And it means there's some policing that has to happen. But I think we need the bathrooms. But do we need this many at this scale? So let's make sure we separate the feasibility of what we need from the design of what that is. Thanks.
Sarah, do you want to comment on the need in the size? So a lot, there have been a lot of discussions about that prior to the open meetings, but trying to address that for you now might be helpful. Sarah?
Okay, so again, we've talked. Okay, so again, we've talked about when the events happen, we are bringing in porta-potties several times. I think with the current size of the boardwalk, the extra businesses that are serving out to the boardwalk, and then the extension of a possible boardwalk, you are bringing several people down there. What would, I guess my question as I go around to the businesses, what would help you guys make and understand how much traffic comes into the businesses? Do you want ballpark numbers from them to say, on a typical weekend, they're seeing, you know, more and more? People are getting entitled, I want to say, to using the businesses' restrooms. They feel as if that is what they should be doing. It does happen on event days when there's a rundown there or when there's a Fall Fest or something like that. They do feel the need that sometimes if the porta-potties get too long of a line, that they need to come in there. It would be very nice to have, I feel, four restrooms in there would be adequate. But again, what kind of information do you guys want me to go get from a traffic standpoint? I can tell you that I have to regularly zip tie the porta-potties that I get on the days leading up to an event or they will be full, which tells me that there's just a lot of people walking around downtown that need restrooms. I don't like to zip tie restrooms because I feel bad if there's kids that need to use them. And that's before an event starts. And I have had to do that. Otherwise, I can't empty a porta potty mid-event. I just can't get them in there.
Well, I think that's a tough question. I think that's a really tough question because how do you know? You're never going to, we're not going to set someone out there to just like mark how many people go into bathrooms around the city.
Right.
That's hard to know. That's kind of a tough question. What we had before we voted down was like 17 restrooms. We're going down to six or seven-ish, eight-ish.
With a footprint that seems to be pretty non-intrusive.
Yeah, I'll just give you a little background on how we got to this. This was proposed by the architect from the private owners. Majority of this was to square off some of the existing staircase that they had. I'm just stating what they had shared with us. And then squared this off to kind of be symmetrical, be able to get our mechanicals. There's a level of, you know, can you put one in there? Well, you also then still need a full mechanical room that you have to do for even the one or the two. So there is some level of that that was put in here. So, you know, that's kind of how we came to those decisions, right or wrong. That's just how we came to them.
Well, I mean, Sarah was saying that it
Can you come up to the microphone, Pam? We can't hear you, but.
I don't know where you're getting the 17, 18 from or anything, but for Thursday Night Movies, Sarah said at the last opening, the meeting, that there were three women's bathrooms there. And she said that that was adequate for the crowds they get, which my understanding is between 1,000 to 2,000 people. So if you have 1,000 to 2,000 people, I'm just repeating what you said. Come with me. Come on. Did I say?
Remember, there's also.
I mean, Sarah.
I don't know how to quantify.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to use an event like that, I think it's fair that we get the right information from, you know, the Moonlight Movie. Remember, at Fowler Park, there's also a building structure there plus porta-potties that accommodate that.
Jason, real quick, from a cost perspective alone, right? Let's take the need out of it. Are we talking about substantial dollars between two and two, three and two? My guess is the cost is going to be pretty much the same, whether we do four and three or two and two.
I know your point.
They're not going to be the same, but yeah, it's going to be, you know, you've got a base cost to build something. And then once you add to that, it's not going to be a linear scale going up. So I understand your point. It was a question. Just confirm me that my thought process is correct.
Two for 100 bucks and you build four, it's not going to be $200.
Well, and I think we need to keep in mind the future also. We will have more events, bigger attendance at events, and we may be shooting ourselves in the foot if we only put two or three in there instead of, you know, doing the four now.
I can dig up some information to support, you know, the Moonlight Movie and share some of those. I think we've all been to those. I've stood in those lines even for men's. So I know whatever they have, they try to, you know.
And part of the discussion we've been having for years about the bathrooms is, to Karen's point, is where we, can we do enough bathrooms on a scale that addresses most of the events without putting porta-potties? So, you know, some little events, maybe the beer gardens and a few other things without having to add in the porta-potties. We know, and we've all said this, for the big events, Fall Fest, German Christmas Market, you're still going to have to bring in porta-potties because there's tens of thousands of people. You know, so now you're getting to the point where you get to the Moonlight Movies is, if we have just 2,000 people, are these bathrooms going to be adequate? That's an interesting question. I think that's important. But if we say, hey, that probably is going to be adequate or it should be close, now we're starting to talk about something that makes sense in that space.
I'm going to go to Holly Schick. She's been patiently waiting.
I can speak to this as the past president of the Festival of the Arts. When you are the vice president, you are the person who brings the toilet paper into the bathroom. So I've got a little, I've got a little experience there. But I must say that, of course, for the Festival of the Arts, we also rent quite a few porta-potties. Those of you who've been there know that it is necessary. There is not enough facility here or over at Fowler Park to accommodate the really large gatherings. So.
We agree with that. Yeah.
We agree.
Absolutely.
But you need to know that many porta-potties are needed for that.
Not quite yet, Jean. If you, Jean, Jean, not quite yet, please. Just one moment. We just have one more blue card. I'd like to make sure everybody gets a chance to talk. And so I just was, I just was sent one blue card. Neil Ninman.
Thank you. Good evening. Neil Ninman, Village Lacla Belle. I know that lady a little bit too, most days. My comment about the city green is more about, I claim her, is more about procedural and what you all are about to have to make some decisions about. Back in 2023, you guys did a strategic plan. It's on your website. And your mission is maintaining a high quality of life by providing safety and excellent services to our community. I think we do a fantastic job of that in this area and I think we'll continue to do so. The vision of the community is Lake Country's premier destination to live, work, and play. To me, this is a project that sees through that vision. It's not just, oh, we're going to add a couple of bathrooms and we're going to clean up a site. No, this is about making this an event space that's already used very, very well. It's about making it a premier one. So yeah, I know there's dollars involved and whether we decide to do two restrooms or four, or whatever it ends up being, I think we'll work through those details. But just keep in mind that you've got a mission and a vision to follow and your community's watching you. And we are now on the third or fourth rendition of bathrooms on the Village Green. I'm going to be honest, it's embarrassing that we can't make a decision about restrooms and cleaning up a Village Green that is used all year long. And it's really a focal point of our community. We're talking about adding a gateway with a flag and all kinds of great seating. So just as a reminder, improving our quality of life assets, community entities, updating parks, these are all your words for a number of you that were on that strategic planning mission. Part of that is, item four is the strategic goal of evaluating, reviewing, updating parks. And underneath item C, evaluate Village Green enhancements and public restrooms in the downtown. I'll leave you with, if we're not going to do it now, when? Thank you.
And I'm going to go to Jennifer and then Jean, I'll come back to you.
First of all, I want to thank Neil for most of what he said. I mean, obviously, we have talked through this a few times and, you know, the last rendition came with quite a big price tag. And, you know, if he wasn't a village resident, you know, he would probably appreciate us not putting that on his tax bill. But, you know, we'll, we'll.
Don't go there.
But one thing, and I believe it was either Jean or Laura, I apologize. Laura had mentioned about, you know, what is, you know, kind of the big why behind the project. And, you know, I think we kind of got, you know, very into, you know, just talking about the bathrooms. We also need to remember, Jason, can you flip to like the image where it shows like the whole new Village Green? That one, yes. So, you know, like along Wisconsin Avenue, you know, those are not just pretty landscaping features. Those are to keep our Village Green safe. Because as Neil Ninman had mentioned, this has become a premier, you know, destination for events. I mean, we constantly have events here. And we did see unfortunately what happened in Waukesha, you know, the city of Waukesha. And we want to keep this area as safe as we can, you know. And then I know that there's some different, correct? There's some different ways that you kind of integrated some stuff along Main Street to make sure nobody can kind of drive up in there. I know you guys worked safety wise. But, you know, let's also remember that's another why of why we're doing this. This is not just about bathrooms. This is also about protecting our community.
And to add to that too, add more parking spaces. It'll use, not just for the food trucks during the event, but it'll be there 365 days of the year. So you have a green space that's basically the same size that's usable. You'll hopefully have bathrooms, maybe, maybe not. You'll have a safer area. You'll have better infrastructure and you have more parking spots. So I think, Jean, you made a really good comment at the beginning as to saying, well, why are we doing this and where are we going? And I want you to understand that this council has worked really, really hard and have had those. The hard thing is articulating that and getting the community engaged. Look, we have, what, four or five people in a city of 20,000 that have come to a meeting like this to share their opinion. And I really, really appreciate all of you guys sharing your opinions. Great. And many of you were also at the same meeting at the community center. There are always ways that we, the devils are in the detail and we are going to get to that. To Holly, to your point of a public-private partnership, we have ideas of how that can be constructed, but we have no details on it because very simply, until we decide, the council makes a decision as to where they want these bathrooms, we can't do anything. And so for us to go spend money on legal contracts and different ways to set up a public and partnership would be very irresponsible of the city staff to do that. So we feel that there's a way, but we could also go through this. Our request, the city and the staff is, here we have something. Is this what you want? Council says, yes, they do like to do this. Most of all, the engineering's done. There'll be a few little changes. If that's the location of the bathroom, then it goes, it has to legally go out for public bid. We can't just get prices and wing it. So it has to go out for bid. And this will be bid into two segments. One will be the bathrooms and the rest will be the rest of the whole Village Green. So council, when that comes back and they can look at the numbers and they can look at, well, how would this agreement work if we do a partnership? They'll have all the facts and the information together to make a really, really informed decision. But they've worked their butts off for a long period of time. But our challenge has always been, how do you inform the public? So when it comes to transparency, this has been very, very transparent. It's been going on for, what, eight-plus years? But I'd rather take eight or even two more years and get it right the first time. So that's okay too. Jean, I'm sorry for cutting you off before, but I had to gain control of the meeting or else we wouldn't go anywhere.
Again, I'm just using it as more open forum. Thanks, you guys. No, I don't have any problem with the fact we need bathrooms. I was trying to think in different communities I've lived in. Edina in Minnesota, very long-term, St. Louis Park, Brookfield. I can't think of any public bathrooms that were in the downtown area. Maybe if they are, they're kind of down in a building that somebody gets to use. We don't have that luxury here and I know you've looked at that. I'm just saying, if I had a priority, you know, just keep that scale lower so people aren't blocking the view like we see at the beach, right? I would love to see that balcony being used. And in some of the parks, you know, if you look at Fox Brook Park, you can rent out the pavilion as a public citizen, not against the business owner. I think you would see a lot of people wanting to use that space in the beach.
Well, and all those things could potentially be options. We just haven't gotten that to that point.
Right. So what I'm saying is, and the reason I'm coming forward, and I've had some conversations with our council member in our district, is look at these as options. Just because a business is coming forward doesn't mean we have to do it this way. I appreciate that they came forward with a nice rendering, but today's world, this stuff's pretty easy to do.
So to be transparent and candid, we reached out to this builder, not the builder to us. Because I'm the one that made the phone call to say, hey, we want to put a bathroom on there. How can we work together? So if anybody's upset with this builder, that is categorically not appropriate at this stage at all. But they didn't reach out to us. I reached out to them.
Well, it seems like they're using this as an opportunity to improve their building.
Absolutely.
Can't they do that without this though? So I'm just saying, let's watch the scale. Do we need a tower? If we do, please make it for public.
Well, if you remember, there was another potential building on the north side of the Village Green that didn't happen. So this building owner wants to increase and improve the facade, wants to make it look better. It's not because they're not willing to spend the money. They're just trying to figure out what's going to happen. So I'm not trying to just preach and support them. I'm just trying to give you the facts of where we are today. Yeah, Chaz.
I'll just make some comments. I share some of the concerns with the rooftop seating. I think I'd like to see that be a public-private partnership on the top as well. I don't quite understand how we went from building the bathroom to building a second story that's for seating for that restaurant. That's concerning to me. It's also concerning to me about the seating on the side. I like the idea in theory, but I think if that becomes some sort of partnership with the restaurant to the side, that will become more of their space than it will be the public space. So it's another concern that I have with like the elevation and like flowers and stuff next to Wisconsin Avenue, not the planters, but like that kind of green space that we have there now, that it's no longer going to be flat. My understanding is it's going to have some level of elevation. There's going to be some other type of vegetation there. A lot of people stand there for the parades down Main Street. I think that's going to be a problem and it's going to block them off and hinder that ability to do that. And then just in general, I mean, when I look at like the trees, I like the idea of the trees and adding them, but I'm like, are we cutting off this entire space kind of from, you know, I mean, even if you look at some of the trees that are lining the actual boardwalk, I mean, I don't know if those were on the original renderings or not, but that's another concern that just kind of sticks out to me is, you know, we really are cutting off the lake in some ways in parts of the, and same with the pergola. Also, kind of going back to the bathroom piece, the garbage. So that garbage, that's right now is where the new restrooms would be, already gets just so nasty, so much juice and stuff that's like leaking out of there. I can only imagine now that that is now being moved down the block or out into the middle of the parking lot and we're like hauling that. I mean, I think that's.
Gross.
Yeah, I don't think, I think that's just so another concern. I heard about premier event space. It's a premier event space and that we should have a building that accommodates at a premier event space. But I think we've all acknowledged that those restrooms aren't going to accommodate the events. It actually has nothing to do with most of the events. It's really for everyday use. We do have restrooms at City Hall. We do have restrooms at Rockwell. We do have restrooms at Buddy's. We do have restrooms at the Banshell. So, you know, if we're talking about walkers around the lake, we also have Fowler. So there's a lot of that going on. And then I am concerned about the choke point at the back. I understand that we're talking about now that it's, the building itself is not going to really push out further than
The dumpsters.
The dumpsters are. But just when we talk about the larger massing that's there and then the additional features that we're putting there, based on the lived experience that we've had with the Buddy's Beach Bungalow and the choke point that I've seen there, I'm just concerned. So maybe that kind of goes back to Kevin's point of having some sort of rendering. I don't know.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, those are some good points, Chaz. A couple of things, most of the constituents in my area that I've talked to like the plans or generally okay with it. I had a big HOA meeting a couple of weeks ago and there was like 50 people there and they walk it. They love to have bathrooms there. So I think there's a consensus, at least in the community generally, that bathrooms ought to go there. One of the things I'm hearing tonight, and again, it's a very small contingent of folks, but is what can we do about the massing? Is there a way to reduce the massing a little bit? The only negative thing I've ever heard is actually about the tower. So if there's a way to get rid of the tower, reduce the tower, just nix the tower so that you create, keep those, you know, sightlines and don't spend more money, I think the tower is probably one of those things that is an easy, you know, cut it out of there. I think the tower is probably one of those things that isn't easy, you know, cut it out of there. I do, one of the things, there were some comments about the public land behind there. Actually, almost all the buildings, in my recollection, when we redid the parking lot, almost all the buildings, the public lot, comes right up to the back of all the buildings. So all of, wherever the garbage goes, all of those folks are using that garbage. All those folks are using public land already. So behind fray, behind the bank, behind all these areas, they're already using and parking and there's parking for some tenants and public spaces. So the concept that, you know, some little footprint is being used by, you know, the building owner, you know, for whatever is kind of, you know, a little disingenuous. Cause all those buildings back there, in fact, also on Collin Street, there's a lot of folks that are using public space. And, and it's only because of the nature of how those buildings have been built and where the city lines ended and where parking lots were built. So a lot of those places are already in it. In fact, I think we have leases for some of these people for little pieces and we let, I don't, I can't remember the name of the group that does the event space out back, but like, yeah, is that free? So they, they can use the space if, for private events, but it's open for other things, which some people, most people don't know by mounds there. Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's actually, yeah, in good company. So that, that space, that patio is actually, that's all city property. They can lease it out. When they're not leasing it out, it's open to the public to use. But we've been doing that for eight years since we redid.
And they, and they pay for it. It's not free.
Yeah. And so there's a lease associated with that. So, you know, those things are out there. I think the sizing of what we're looking at, at least the amount of bathrooms makes sense for the space for the daily. When you're down there on a Friday, Saturday afternoon in summer, especially when we expand this and we make this even nicer and we expand the boardwalk, you can't find a place to even eat there. I mean, everything's used up and I, I guarantee you those bathrooms are going to get used extensively. So I, I think the sizing's fine, but I, I would like to see some renderings that maybe reduce the massing of it or, or the, the, the structure used, get rid of the tower, some of that kind of stuff. I think that could help with some of the, the main concerns about the bathroom structure. So, yeah, I mean, you start, I mean, that thing is huge, you know? It's, you could, we can improve some of that, I think is part of it and save some money too.
And for the public to know too, doing that tower is not a city expense.
Well, that, that may be, but we could use, they could use money for other things then.
Correct. But what I'm saying too is that, you know, if there are things that we remove up above, that won't say the city need money. And the owners of the building are fine to work with us as to whatever, you know, the council would like to do. Cause there were multiple renderings of that top area and it could go a lot of different directions. Yeah.
I'm just wondering if, if the partners are then building out over on city property for a restaurant. Is, are they, are they buying that property? Will they be leasing the property?
The property will always stay city owned. The area above is still what we have to work on with them in a public partner, partnership, if the council wants to do that. So we haven't gotten to that point of how that looks. Is it a public space? Is it just a private space for them? We've had a lot of discussions. What we're trying to do in this is say, if we can put something together, not had, add any debt or any effect on the property tax levy, is this where we want the bathrooms? And is this the village green that you, that we want?
Yeah. I mean, everyone's saying that it's bathrooms on the village green and it was number bathrooms on the village green. We looked at all kinds of different locations for bathrooms. And so all of a sudden it's bathrooms on village green. And I think that's, thank you.
Any last comments? Cause I know we need to move on to other items, cause we're running a little bit over. We want to thank everybody for coming. And please, there's a lot of love and passion for this area. And please don't take any of the council members' comments or myself's as any kind of negative things towards, towards any person, any individual. It's just about, here's what we have today. Do we want to move forward with something like this today? And then your point is the devil's in the detail and that's huge. And it has to be set up so it's a not to exceed number, so we don't have any surprises. Okay. I would like to then end this session on the discussion of city green improvements. We're going to move on to discuss options for John's disposal. So if you'd like to stay about sanitary sewer or sanitary removal, garbage removal, you're welcome to stay.
I thought they would have stayed.
There. When did we rename it city green?
Few weeks ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
I think some of the renderings of the.
I think we should take that to a boat.
If you want to, it's up to you. I don't care.
It's not beneficial.
Go for it. Let's, let's talk about it. Yes. We're going to talk about.
Takes a little bit to go from village green to like garbage collection, but.
Yeah. Good.
It's part of my world.
So there's just a discussion, folks. Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah. This is kind of a follow-up from, if you remember in June, I brought a contract through, actually a contract extension through with John's disposal, our current hauler for our garbage and recycle. So they, they had a three-year agreement with the city. In fact, they've even serviced our city back to 2015. And we extended a three-year contract this, this season right now that we're in right as. And the idea would be to discuss with the council member of the city on what we want to do for a new contract. Specifically some of the services. Not too many options. I mean, it's garbage collection, but I, I will kind of extend some of the struggles that John's disposal has in turn, some of our customers, you know, our residents, struggle with how to work with it. One of them is the bulk pickup service that we offer right now. We are one of the only cities that still allows our citizens to pick up bulk pickup the way we do and the frequency that it happens. And right now we're entitled to one bulk item per week. We do not have to call. We don't have to do anything. We simply set it out by the, the curb, which is very convenient for the homeowner in the respect that they can just place it there. The struggle is our customers are, you know, a little bit struggle with just the one item. For instance, if you had a bed mattress and a box spring, you have to wait consecutive weeks to do that. Sometimes just cleaning of the house produces more bulk items. So, you know, we get calls in our office on how they can get rid of the rest of the stuff rather than waiting week to week to week. And the real struggle is kind of on the backend, more of a service provider issue where if you guys have seen the hauler, the large trucks they have, they all have the side loaders. So they have to tip the thing above. And you can imagine how high that is. It's over 12 feet tall. So the operator has to get out, pick up that bed mattress or the bulk item and toss it over the top. So they're really struggling with trying to collect that safely. They do have to call in some side and rear loading trucks to make that, that option happen. So just kind of reviewing some of the options to help both sides of this, one of those is the option. John's disposal has extended the offer to the city. Twice a month, a resident could call in with bulk items, with unlimited amount of bulk items they might want. But they have to call in, let them know, and then they can, they can stage their service accordingly. Meaning that they would call in a different truck depending on what it is and kind of schedule that. So that would be no cost change. It would just be a service change. And then the idea of trying to have the residents call in versus just simply putting their, you know, their bike mattress or, you know, whatever it is. In fact, I think there's even some advantages here that I really like. The bulk pickup items can include TVs now. Right now, residents.
The old TVs? Like tube TVs?
Do those even exist anymore?
Said TVs.
The big tube TVs?
If you still have one.
Never mind.
Here's, here's the idea. TVs in general, there's, you know, very little value in the old style, trying to get the metals out of it. New TVs much different, but I think we phased out a lot of the tube TVs is what John's is contesting. Therefore they're willing to take, if you still have one sitting around, they're willing to take that risk. And in turn, they will collect TVs, which is a big component for us. If you recall, right now, your only option really is to take advantage of Waukesha County's electronic pickup, which just happens twice a year. We do one right here in Oconomak for them. You are charged $25 to dispose of a TV right now. So take that for what it is. Again, this is not an action item. This is just discussion. And I'm open to suggestions or thoughts. And the other really nice thing that we have, I don't know, maybe you don't think this is nice, but I, I, regarding our yard waste pickup for an urban city, I've done it. This is my third city. This is one of the cleanest ways I have seen yard waste collected and disposed of. Where we, as a resident are asked to put it in a brown paper bag, put it out by the, the side of the, the curb. The hauler comes and picks it up, disposes it for us. It's all over. Right now, we collect 20 times a year, very minimum cost. It's a very nice program, the way it sets right now. I'm not looking to change that. But the hauler, John's disposal is struggling some days in like the really demanding days or parts of the season. They're asking for like, hey, if you, if I normally pick it up on Wednesday, can I pick it up Wednesday and Thursday? Just to extend those, I've seen guys out, I've given monster drinks to some of those guys as they're out there until, you know, six, seven o'clock some nights, trying to collect the solid recycle and yard waste is typically a lot of the same operators. So those are really the two big items that we would be looking at trying to work with John's. If, you know, if the council is still interested in continuing service with them. I think I've kind of laid this out. You know, the city in fact would be looking to try to secure kind of a longer-term contract with some of these thoughts that, you know, maybe the services are, you know, now that we've been working with this for 10 years with them, on being able to, you know, secure that, lower the risk of any type of strong inflation. We have clauses in there for annual increases. They're very controllable. And, you know, have a nice secured contract with them. That would be one idea here as we move into the new year. There's a couple of ideas I was floating out there. One would be, you know, if we wanted to look at those types of services, do we want to look at trying to do like a trial run underneath our extension right now with the no cost changes? If we wanted to offer some of the bulk changes, starting in the first of the year. So I wanted to bring this up kind of early if we wanted to try to promote that or announce that in some fashion. Maybe putting flyers in their annual tax bills and stuff like that. I kind of wanted to catch that in front if we wanted to explore that. If not, our contract ends in June. So we would have to kind of restructure our thoughts there and I, it does take some time if we were to move in a different direction. So. Questions on that? I know I kind of talked quickly, but.
Jason, what, so number one, I like the idea of the added service for no additional cost. Out of curiosity, what kind of advanced warning is it like a week or two week? Like what kind of notification? Do they talk about those?
I asked the same question and I think if you gave them a call the day before, they.
So is that okay?
Yeah. I think they would struggle the day of. But yeah, if you can give their office a call during their working hours to schedule that, I think they would work, work with us there.
I've done that in another community and it works really well. So Jennifer, I think you're up next.
I just wanted to say thank you for the bulk thing. Cause I brought that up. Didn't we recently have a rep from John's here like within the last couple of months or like a year?
We did. Yeah, back in June when we were getting this extension. He was going to be here tonight, but he's got two other communities. I've got, I think this is on the 21st agenda too possibly, or we can talk about this again.
It could be for action if we're at a point to do that.
The last thing I wanted to bring up, right now we have solid waste collected every week, recycle every other week. A lot of communities are moving to every week recycle collection. That would be an option if we wanted to research that. That's another effort on their part. Obviously there would be some cost change there. It's not a linear change there. There would probably be a little savings as, you know, the, the struggle right now is like, you know, you get your larger recycle bin. And if that fills up within the two weeks, I don't know what happens to that. Do you, you know, do you take the extra effort in compacting it down? Or do you, or does that fall back into our trash bins in some fashion? And just to be, just to kind of explore this idea a little bit, you know, we pay for trash to be disposed of. We have to take that to the landfill. The landfill charges us. Recycle, on the other hand, goes to another facility. It gets managed and we do not pay for the disposal of that. So there's a trade-off of why you don't want recycles and trash because now you're paying money to go to a landfill when it really could go to a, a site to be recycled. So there is some advantage I ask to try to get some data, like, you know, if we do it every week, are we going to see a big return? Not probably the return that I was hoping for, but there is a small piece there. I guess it's more of the, you know, the thought of trying to get, you know, larger families and maybe if you're a family of two, this isn't a big deal. Larger families, three, four, five, six and, and up might struggle on every other week on recycle. But those are, those are about the three items I got. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts or feedback on something like that.
So the, the yard waste, you said 20 times a year they pick up yard waste?
Yep.
Do you, and this might've been right before your time, Jason, but what was that, June of '22, we had that hailstorm? How did we handle the yard waste pickup from that?
They picked it all up.
So did we have to dive into one of our 20 or did we just, did they kind of grant us an extra?
There was some extra costs involved because of the amount and the time, but it, they actually just billed us for some extra time. But they spent days here picking up.
I mean, and I know that that storm was, I mean, hopefully that never happens again. But I mean, is there anything in this new contract that we should be considering something like that going forward?
That's a good thought there too of having some structure for that, like, you know, give me a rough price for an extra collection. Or maybe it's just better structured, just an open item with the understanding that, you know, they would add that service on demand.
Yeah. I think, I mean, again, I hope we never see, I mean, we were, I think mine and Kevin's neighborhood, we were in the heart of that. And I hope to never see that again, but I think it would be nice to see something in this contract that should that happen again, we have something in place. Cause I know that that was, you know, we had a lot of residents that were kind of panicking going, you know, I have bags of bags of leaves. What do we do? So.
Yeah, Rusty and then Matt.
I enjoy riveting topic like trash. I've lived in a bunch of different cities and I do think us here in Oconomak, we're incredibly spoiled with what we have. So the idea of trying to get like a 10-year contract, especially if there's ways that we can lock in prices over the next 10 years would be a smart thing to do, cause I do think we have a really good thing. The bulk pickup is interesting because I hate seeing items on the road. It'd be nice to avoid that. Unlimited is a word I think we need to define, cause theoretically I could remodel my house, call in a bulk pickup and it's covered. So I, I think, you know, would love to understand more about that, cause it could be an incredible value if that's really what they mean. But I'm all for trying to find a 10-year agreement. I think what we have is really good. I don't know if we necessarily need to spend more to get recycling every other week. I personally would love to learn more about the recycling process to see if things are actually being recycled that are taken away. But I, I think 10-year agreement would be something we should explore.
Matt?
Yeah, I completely, Rusty, you're spot on. I think we try to get a long contract with them, lock in prices. Have we, have we thought about a bulk drop-off area here in the city? Like somewhere where we could drop it off and they would, you know, John's would then pick it up.
Well, you already have one for cardboard.
Yeah, that's true. You have the cardboard.
Always full and it's not always full of cardboard.
I've increased the pickups on it.
People just need to break down their boxes.
Down the boxes.
Yeah, just in a pinch, but I, I don't mind the call-ins. I've called in John's a couple of times. Once you're in their system, they have you. Once you do a bulk call-in and then pay for it, you're in the system. And I've had to do that a couple of times. It's really not a big deal. It's actually really not expensive either. If you have a big project, it's not a bad deal. I agree with Rusty too, every week recycling. I don't, I got, there's six people in my house, so I got four kids. I mean, the only time we really fill that recyclable bin all the way up and overflow is Christmas. When there's like 80 million kids presence wrapped in cardboard and then we're, and then I got two of the kids standing on top of it, crushing it down and trying to get it all in there. So I, I like, I like some of these proposals. I think it makes sense. So I'm, I'm for us moving ahead.
Okay. I'll work with John's.
Thanks.
No, no recycling every week.
Yeah.
Okay. If we ever want to figure that out differently, we can always do that, I'm guessing. So I'll work with them on that. I just would add that like it's, the bulk pickup is really an important thing and changing that, I think will have a material impact on people's life as well. So I think it would be great to be able to give as much as we want, but I do have some concerns of things starting to accumulate and pile up also. So we can talk about it some more, but I've generally been pleased with the bulk pickup, but one isn't enough. We need, yeah, more than that for sure. Like more than one item.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think they're willing to do that.
But then our neighbors won't talk to each other anymore, saying, you know, can I put the box spring on your garbage? And then I'll put the mattress by yours, and I'll have, I mean, my neighborhood would never do that.
Yeah, oh yeah. Just put it at Kevin's.
All right, guys, let's move on to Consider Recommend Resolution 25-R-3313, Building Inspection Fee Changes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're moving from trash to building inspection fees. This item's on the council agenda, so I'll be brief and try to give a quick overview of what, you know, kind of where we're at. I've kind of listed in the background, you can see the frequency in which the city has updated their fees for their building inspections. You know, there's a wide range of stuff. Kind of got them on the second page there. So, I was able to go with our, our building inspection team, Wisconsin Building Inspections, and I think a couple of them, they're back here with us today. If we have any deeper questions or later, they can help answer. But we were able to kind of narrow down some of this. And I'll be frank with you, it, it seems like there was like some, some alternating frequency in here every five years. Not everything got updated. I'd say about every 10 years, each item kind of gets updated. So, that's what I've recommended, as tried to pull some evaluations from the surrounding communities. So, we're not at the top end, we're not at the bottom end. And really, what I wanted, I don't want to do is I don't want to outprice us for people, you know, not wanting to come in and actually get a permit sometimes. So, what you're seeing here is some recommended increases for the building inspection fee that we have in there. Underneath the additional analysis, you can see kind of the impact there based off of some averages the last few years. And really, what this means to an average homeowner coming into the city. If we increase the new residential, you know, they're looking at $500, $600 on average more for the inspection of a permit.
My only que, oh, I'm sorry. My only question I had is for the deck. This deck increase is pretty, that's pretty hefty. And that could affect, I mean, not just new builders, because it's, it's a little easier to say, we'll add a few cents to the new builders and new commercial. That's a little less divisive. But the 75 extra dollars, that's a big jump. That's almost 100% jump. And what is the why?
Large jump in here. What I did is, we don't really have any money in here for the review fee. So, what happens is they come in and they submit a plan. And Joe, our inspector, can contest to how minimal of a plan we get. We spend an incredible amount of time trying to get the owner or the applicant or the contractor to a level where they can actually physically build this thing to code. This isn't even enough to probably cover. Gets us closer.
Okay. How, I guess, the residential is, if you're, how much of the commercial stuff is done by people who live in Oconomowoc? How much, like, the building owner lives in Oconomowoc? The developer, the construction people live in Oconomowoc? Is that a decent amount of people? Are we seeing a lot of these fees being paid by outside companies?
If I understand it right, I mean, the residential, obviously, they live there.
Residential, yeah.
Commercial.
Or the commercial side.
I'd have to probably guess very few of them.
My, my question would be is, could we create a fee structure saying, hey, if you live in Oconomowoc, or you have an Oconomowoc-based builder, contractor, we want to prioritize local. We're going to have lower fees for people who own land here, own buildings here, versus the commercial that is owned from people outside of the city or even state? If that's not doable, then...
Can we legally do that?
Yeah, I don't know if that's a legal...
I don't think you can.
There might be other advantages for them to get it. I don't know if permit fees are it. You know, there might be some other things that we've already offered them.
Can't have disparate treatment of people based on their location for that kind of...
That'd be my guess.
We do it at the boat launch.
Well, so, slightly different. No, we don't. We do it for like the tags at the beach, but that's a, that's a strictly service-only, service usage versus, you know, property rights thing. So, I think that's probably where, City Attorney's not here to answer that question.
Let's double-check, go certi-attorney and kind of go from there.
If there's, if there's no appetite for it, then we don't need to waste attorney fees on that.
I don't know, maybe there's a more incentive somewhere else that...
Any other questions? I'd like to entertain a motion to recommend moving this to council.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg has stepped out. Alderman Mulder's absent. Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Aye.
Okay, and to our next item, Consider Recommend the Resolution 25-R-3312, Supporting the Expansion of Interstate 94 in Western Waukesha County. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Waukesha County worked to include into the state budget the modernization and reconstruction of Interstate 94 in Waukesha County, mainly from Highway SS where it bottlenecked down to the county line. At the last minute, the governor did veto it out of the budget. So, now there's another process that they have to follow, which has them submitting to the DOT, who has to send to the Transportation Planning Committee, who will then have to approve it. And then we can look to getting it enumerated and, and having it get into the budget. There's still a lot of work that has to take place from there. But in the couple of discussions that I attended for this, the real eye-opener is when you look at the list of projects that are up on the screen, and with the item that we're talking about up on the top line, when you look at the high number of average daily vehicles compared to these other projects that have already been approved to be constructed. So, there's this many that are ahead of us already, and they don't even hit the same numbers that we are. So, we think it's really important to put a big push on it. So, in listening to the discussions, I thought it'd be really good, because we're part of it. We're, we're right in the middle of this, and we have all of our development being proposed out in that area, that it would be a good idea for us to have a resolution that we could provide to all the people involved with this, knowing that we support it. So, that's what the resolution is here before you tonight.
Any questions or comments? This is basically a resolution of support that would then go to Madison. And my understanding is, even if everything goes in a positive direction, we're probably still looking at 10 years before this might be, would be built.
And that's if funding's available. That'll be the big question.
Big, okay.
Yeah, because this was the presentation from, what was that, last week?
Yes.
Waukesha County, and then one of the gentlemen that works for Waukesha County had been with the DOT for a long time. And it was, it was a really, it was a great presentation that, and I'm very thankful for Bank 59 hosting it, and I believe the chamber was part of it. This particular slide was probably the most interesting, that when you look at these numbers and to think that this project was vetoed out, when you look at this, is just, it was, it was eye-opening. And then, what was the, they had talked about the last time they did a highway project in Waukesha County was the Highway 16 project in like '94?
'95.
Or '95 or whatever?
Was the last major DOT project in Waukesha County.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, we're kind of like the ugly stepchild of, of Wisconsin, it kind of feels like, so...
Or maybe it's political in nature.
Or maybe it's, I mean, yeah, who knows? But it's just...
Madison, Milwaukee got everything on their own?
This sure looks like it.
You said it, Mark, not us. But I'm very glad that we're making this resolution, and I'm very in support of it. Thank you.
Would anyone like to make the recommendation to move this forward?
I will happily make the recommendation to move this forward.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Aye.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For those of you that may be staying for the council meeting, if you want to make comments, a public comment, there's a, you can pick another blue card. Yeah, or if you want to come up and you want to talk, I'm happy to talk to anybody. We're going to start in about 15 minutes at 7:30 promptly. Thank you.
I'd like to call the order, the City of Okonkwo Common Council meeting for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
It has, Your Honor.
Would our city attorney please have the privilege of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I think. Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis. Alderman Spiegelberg is out and Alderman Mulder has been excused. We expect Alderman Spiegelberg to be back this evening. Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman McConnell.
Here.
Alderman Youngworth.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Here.
Like to entertain a motion for the approval for minutes for September 16th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments you'd like to make the council during our public comment section? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda items. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Moves on. We'll move on to our committee reports, protection and welfare. We have two items, council. Both of them are listed as first readings. The first one is Consider Act on Ordinance 25-01108 to repeal and recreate 9.201A1, use of intoxicants restriction. This is the first reading.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Lieutenant.
Thank you. All right. So what we're trying to do here is just change the wording. This ordinance currently is under the license and permit section, under ordinance number 12. So we want to take that wording, put it more into the enforcement portion, the public order. So basically, it will read that they cannot possess or consume open intoxicants on the public right of way, such as sidewalks or on privately owned streets. As of right now, it says privately owned, I'm sorry, open to the public for motor vehicles.
So, council, do you have any questions? We did go through this at committee earlier this evening.
So it is currently in ordinance, we're just moving the wording from the section 12 over to nine. And it's much easier for the officers, too.
That was the clarification I wanted to make. And just so for everybody listening, it is already restricted in another ordinance. We are just moving it to an enforcement one. It's not legal currently. It's not something we're able to do. We can enforce it. We're just moving it to a more organized place.
Correct.
One more thing. It used to be streets. It really didn't designate right of way, which includes sidewalks, which is, I think, the moving thing behind us, wasn't it?
Correct.
Good. Like to-
It's not, is it currently legal on sidewalks and public rights away?
It's debatable. We want to try to make sure that it is clear.
Clear. Is that fair? Correct.
So what are we changing in practice, then?
Well, right now, it says streets could be just the streets and not the sidewalk. Right of way includes sidewalks. So that's why it has been changed to make it clear you're not going to be walking around on a sidewalk unless it's a special event with an open intoxicant.
So in practice, right, sorry, can I go ahead?
Sure.
So in practice, right now, are we enforcing the restrictions on open intoxicants on sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, so in practice, nothing's really changing?
Nothing's changing.
Okay.
Like to entertain a motion, please.
So Rosick, so moved.
Do you want to waive the first reading or leave it?
Oh, yeah, we don't need the readings. I'll amend my motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
I'm sorry, waive the second reading, my apologies. Yeah. I'm off kilter.
I will still second that.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
We've got four policemen here. If I say no, will I be arrested?
You'll be safe.
Thank you, Alderman Shellpepper.
Or we will be safe.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Aye.
Ellis vote. Just ask a question.
Aye.
Next up, Consider Act on Ordinance 25-0110 to amend section 9.940.191, offenses against state laws related to misdemeanor battery. This again, council, is the first reading.
Good evening.
Captain.
So in August of 2025, the Wisconsin Legislature passed Wisconsin Act 24. It's kind of pretty much changed the misdemeanor battery statute from 940.19 sub one to 940.60 sub one. So we want to stay consistent and change our municipal chapter nine code for our battery to 9.940.60 sub one to stay consistent again with the state statute for battery. I'll take any questions related to that.
Questions or comments for Captain Tim? Like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Do you want to waive-
I'll waive the second reading, so moved.
Second.
Do we have a second?
I just said second.
Second, okay, I didn't hear you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. On to new business. First item up is Consider Act on a memorandum of understanding for Pabst Farms development. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, sir. We're excited tonight to talk about a project that was recently made known to the public through a press release for approximately 210 acres out in the Pabst Farms area. Partnering up is Pabst Farms, which Brian Bell is here tonight, and then Cobalt Partners, represented by their president, Scott Yelch, who will be here. Because this is new to the public and the only thing that's gone out so far is the press release, we thought it'd be appropriate if they'd give you a little bit of an idea of kind of what they're looking at, just a really broad overview. Because the one thing I can say is, right now, we are in just really plenary stages of this. There's a lot of work in front of us, a lot of things that we couldn't answer tonight, transportation, environmental, those types of things, that will all be worked out as we go through the process. They're just looking to get an MOU approved so that there's an understanding between all the parties. And the same MOU will also be acted on by the village of Summit on Thursday night because we're working together on this, side by side, to try and get this development, if it works for all of us, to go through. So I will leave it up for Scott and Brian to come up and walk through their presentation and then we'll get in there.
Scott, if you could introduce yourself to the community, just to kick us off?
Sure. Good evening. I'm Scott Yelch, president and CEO of Cobalt Partners. We're a Milwaukee-based development firm. As Mark indicated, Brian Bell is here, so we've got other questions for Brian. We can do that, including what the score of the Brewers game was last night. I see how this works. You went from battery to real estate developers. I don't know what to think of that, but-
We took the shotgun or-
We've been down that path before, so we appreciate being here tonight. We're excited about the opportunity and certainly to be before you this evening. How do I advance this?
Just click the mouse.
The mouse. Click the mouse, all right. So just a couple of words of inspiration here. And really, what this is about for us is building community. We're going to a little bit of what we do, but we primarily are mixed-use developers. We've done about, we've got about 12 to 15 projects in various stages right now throughout mainly Wisconsin. But it's about creating community, that's really the, and respecting the legacy of the land. And that'll ultimately come through in kind of some of the ideas we have for the development. But we think this is a unique opportunity. And as Mark indicated, you know, the same MOU as before, will be before the Village of Summit two days from this evening. The request ultimately, I'll get into in a minute, but it's for an MOU, which is really a setting out a roadmap. It's more symbolic, it's non-binding, but it kind of lays out expectations. And we think it's a good way to go about a project from the outset. So this again, it's non-binding, it's non-committal. I'll let your city attorney talk a little bit more about what that means. But this is an opportunity to look at how both of these communities come together and create a development that spans both boundaries. From our perspective, it's one project, right? Where that boundary is, is a little bit irrelevant for our perspective for just creating the right project, not to be dismissive of kind of the municipality's input in that. But from a development perspective, it's a singular project, and that's really what we think is the best way to implement this. The team, as we talked about briefly, again, we're a Milwaukee-based developer. If you're familiar with like 84 South and Greenfield, it's about a 48-acre project with Aurora and a bunch of retail and housing in Menominee Falls. We've done what's called Whitestone Station, which is a Costco-based development along the interstate near Pilgrims. Projects in Kenosha and Appleton and Bayside and others are all mixed-use. We worked in public-private partnership in all of those projects, which has really kind of become our niche. We're a little over 20 years old this year, so it's been around for a little while. Brian and his family, I think, unless Brian wants to make any comments, I think you probably have, you know who his family is and Brian's reputation here. So I'll leave it at that unless there's any other comments. So we work with Rinca. Hopefully, most are familiar with who Rinca is. They've done a lot of the bigger iconic projects in the area. They've worked with us on most of our projects, so we've got a good track record. So we work with Rinca. Hopefully, most of you are familiar with who Rinca is. They've done a lot of the bigger iconic projects in the area. They've worked with us on most of our projects, so we've got a good track record in working with them on mixed-use projects. We think they're great at placemaking, and that's going to be important in what our plan is here. From a perspective of the site, we're talking this two hundred and ten acres, right? It's here, you'll see highlighted there in yellow. So it includes the Conwalk portion north of the interstate, and then the eastern half of that is, of course, the Summit portion, and then the southern triangle is also within Summit. That's been added, really at the request of Summit, to look at the totality of how this could work. We've focused candidly less planning on that southern piece right now than we have on the northern piece, but we'll include that in the study area. Just kind of an inset now, you'll see in that, in that area that's popped up in the upper right, those particular acres, again, that constitute that two hundred and ten acres. And then just some more context, within the greater sense of the overall, you know, Pabst Farms development, you've got the Pabst fifty-nine portion you can see. And then, again, we take a portion now of that larger pop-out at the top and show where the Costco site plan fits in, just to give everybody some context and kind of get your bearings on the site. So the balance of the area is really the subject of the MOU. Again, a portion, and the bulk of it, the majority being within the City of Conwalk, the balance being the Village of Summit. Our view, again, what are some of the goals, right? I mean, we want to certainly advance some of the comprehensive planning goals, grow the tax base, while also thinking about sustainability, honoring some of the history of the land, the legacy of the land, and really create a regional destination for a mix of uses. Some of the things we're starting to look at, and again, this is really early, but wanted to show you that, you know, there's thought that goes into, right, the road network and how this sets up, and just some preliminary ideas. None of this is set in stone. Again, it's very early, so these are just initial concepts, but there will be, you know, a whole series of studies on traffic and, you know, street controls and the like. Some of this, some of the things that you'll see ultimately in our planning will include pedestrian networks. We think that, you know, walkable environment with things that respect existing connectivity, some of your current developments is important. Just another overall map to show kind of the context. So, again, this evening, we're here before you on an MOU for your consideration. I know that the attorneys from both the city and the village have gone through and commented on those, and there were some comments that came back to us. We were, we accepted those changes. But, again, I don't want to step on the city's attorney's toes. Do you want to talk about it? You want me to just hit any highlights of it? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Again, it's really symbolic. It's a roadmap for the next steps. It's early in the process. Again, this is non-binding. Even when this gets signed, it's non-binding, but I think it sets expectations. What it does is it lays out this process, and really, the first step is for us to identify a project team and just do a little bit more market analysis and study. We've been doing a lot of this work to this point, so this isn't the first time, you know, we've looked at it, but we've got a sense of what some of those marketing analysis would say about the demand. And then we start working on more of a master plan. That would include site plans, kind of a strategy for phasing, what those road networks look like, what green spaces look like, starting to do some building massing, again, working through a process with just, with an overall plan development and getting feedback from the respective communities and their staff along the way. As that plan takes shape, that starts to inform kind of our financial model, so we can start to build, you know, what's the budget, what's the cost, what's the increment creation potential. There is discussion of TIF here. You know, in today's world, it's really hard with interest rates and just construction costs. But I mean, those are things that have to be borne out and proven. There's a whole process for all of these things, so none of that's assumed at this point, but we'll work through it. But it is something that likely you'll hear about at some point, to be candid. Along with that, we'd lay out an implementation plan. That would include kind of schedule and timeline. And then, as we go forward, there'd be, there'd be an expectation to come back for, you know, some element of rezoning. This probably becomes a PUD, but again, that's all things that need to get figured out. But that process, you're not committing to any of that right now, other than, you know, in good faith to look at it. We'd have the ability to submit that anyway, so this just sets those expectations. So that zoning process, TIF process, all those would follow the normal course that they would take under any other kind of development, but it just creates this overall roadmap. Again, the other key piece to this, we think, is it's the same agreement that would go before Summit, so these brings the two, the two communities together to work in unison, where I really think there's opportunity, something special here, and not have that dividing point be one where suddenly uses change and the development takes on a different tone. From the, from the municipality side, it would really be, again, looking at rezoning and the entitlements as that comes forward through the normal process. There's no pre-commitments to do anything in that regard, considering the establishment of a TID as appropriate, subject to all the underwriting that goes with that and the but-for test and the like, permitting and approval and things that would come along with that, working with your public works department on utilities and infrastructure. And then just how public relations, we don't run around and say crazy things without coordinating how some of that gets coordinated from our perspective, perspectives. And then, again, it's a non-binding agreement. All these commitments remain subject to the normal public process. Either party can terminate on short notice. I don't remember if it was ten days, but it's short notice. There's an agreement whereby we reimburse the municipalities for any professional fees. So that is all I have. Glad to answer any questions now, if it's appropriate or.
Yeah, comments or questions from counsel?
That was easy. Go back to battery.
Stan, correct me if this isn't the frame for this conversation. I think it's a very interesting project, based on what I've seen, definitely in line with what the vision for that area is. I know this is just the very step one, but I am going to express some skepticism and concern and reservation, maybe, around the creation of any TID district or TID, using TIF funds to do this. I'm not entirely convinced it's needed for this particular area. It's highly valuable land. I do think things will happen there. But I know we're not approving that or saying forward. I'm saying, for the sake of, I think, you know, you knowing where I stand, at least, I'm going to be hard-pressed to.
Sure.
Forward in that particular direction. I'm not saying no to the plan. I think it's great, but the TID creation would be an area that I'm going to struggle with.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and, you know, there's a whole process there, and we can't, I mean, we've got to make a case, and there's underwriting, and sometimes it isn't a matter of, it's a matter of what gets developed. If you look at some of our other projects, if you look at the architecture, some of those, you'll see that we've elevated architecture from what maybe a national retailer might be satisfied with, EFIS and so forth, as some of the exteriors. And we'll build a better product that ultimately has a greater tax base. And so that's stuff we appreciate. It's got to be worked out, and we're not assuming anything there. But want to just be candid that in today's environment, it's, a lot of things are really tough without some of that, and it's a bridge we'd have to cross. We understand that. Appreciate your comment.
Stan, do you have any comments with regard to the MOU? Okay.
God, thanks for coming in today. You and I talked briefly before the meeting about the timelines. I was a little concerned that the timelines for you guys were really fast, but you guys think you can meet those timelines?
Yeah, we're comfortable with those timelines. We inserted those dates. I know that the municipalities, those were blanks when we started, and we filled those in. And we certainly, you know, again, before we came here before you today, have been, you know, giving thought to those various deliverables, so we're comfortable with those dates.
Okay, and I'm comfortable with our deadline to just review the things presented on the deliverables. I had some concerns before, but I, after talking with you, I feel like that's probably okay. You had mentioned that there was a termination of the memorandum that we could both do. That's not the way paragraph fourteen reads. It's really a one-way termination, although because it's voluntary, I suppose we could just not pursue anything.
We'd have no issue if you want to make that mutual.
Yeah, I'd like to make fourteen mutual. I can provide some language and clarity there. I also didn't, and you and I had talked about this, the publicity section here. I have a proposed footnote I'd like to put in, and this is the footnote, and let me know if you think this is agreeable or not. What I didn't want is this to be like a gag order on aldermen meeting with their constituents and talking to their constituents about the project. So what I propose is we add a footnote to paragraph eleven that says, "Nothing in this section shall be interpreted to prevent city council or village board members from discussing, commenting, or otherwise disseminating information on the project to their respective constituents." Do you see any issues?
Yeah, no, that's acceptable. And I, I mean, as I think of, I don't know that we need, I mean, it's a public process. I don't know. Well, that's, that's, that's a good. Maybe we just strike the whole thing. We don't, I don't.
I'd be completely fine striking the publicity section.
Maybe that's just better.
I want to make these changes right now, because the village is going to be looking at those tomorrow.
Right.
So I'm going to, as we're sitting here, I'm going to strike publicity completely, paragraph thirteen or eleven. And in the termination, I'm simply going to insert that either party may.
Yeah, any of the parties.
Right. So I'll do that, not while I'm talking.
That's, that's really fair.
No, I think that, what's that?
Not while I'm talking, but I will.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
When I stop talking.
I don't, I never liked the publicity section, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's okay.
It makes it really kind of weird, right?
Yeah, I think that some of this carried forward. We've used this in other contexts, and it just causes unnecessary consternation.
And the only reason I kind of fly-spec this is we had an MOU issue years ago, when I was first on council, about eleven years ago, where an MOU was not properly drafted, and it turned into a litigation with our neighbors right across the street. So I do have one other minor little tweak. It's in section nine. It's the development undertakings. And right now, the way it reads is, during the term of this memorandum, the parties shall, and then later on, it says, again, the parties shall, well, the parties agreed to pursue in good faith. What I'd like to do is just strike out the shall and say may, and then in the second section, the parties may pursue implementation of the following undertakings. I don't want there to be any mandatory language in this MOU whatsoever.
Yeah, that's all fine.
Okay. Does that make sense, Stan?
It's already in.
Okay.
Good ideas.
I don't think you'll get any pushback from someone.
Yeah, no, I think the summit, the summit boys will agree.
Yes, Chaz.
Broader point, I mean, it, and like, it's like section seventeen, it just says binding obligations. This memorandum shall not be binding upon the parties other to impose an obligation to negotiate in good faith. I mean, does that basically mean, Stan, that nothing in here is binding in any way, other than we will negotiate in good faith?
And that's a good point. That's correct. And the reason that I'm not concerned about the good faith aspect of that is absolute black-letter law. Municipalities always have to operate in good faith. So when anybody suggests that kind of language in any agreement that I'm involved in, no problem.
Okay, and then the other question I had was about the traffic study. Is that going to be on the dime of the developer?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yeah. And you'll know, one of the binding obligations, of course, the only binding obligation now is twelve reimbursement professional fees.
Right.
Go figure how that one works. But, and then, when the, when eleven comes out, I guess your reference in seventeen will have to change a little bit, right? Unbinding obligations, is that internal reference to paragraphs eleven and twelve?
Just cut out, yeah, chapter eleven, paragraph eleven. Yeah, that's done.
It all works for us.
Good. You're comfortable with that?
Sure.
I need your footnote.
I'll provide it, so.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the council? With that in mind, with those changes, Alderman Rosick, would you like to make this motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Make sure everything's included. With staff review and legal review included, please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we act on the memorandum of understanding as duly amended here this evening.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman McConnell?
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Aye.
So Stan, he's got, the summit will get this tomorrow or tonight?
If I get the language, I'll do it right now instead of right now.
Okay.
I gotta make myself useful sometime.
You don't have to charge us.
Well, I am charging you.
Must be city budget time. I don't think Stan heard that.
I don't think he did either, but I liked it. Okay, next item, Consider Act on Resolution twenty-five dash R three three one three, building inspection fee changes. Friends from Pabst and Cobalt, thank you, and we look forward to looking at this possible option. Mr. Herzog?
All right, good. Just follow-up from our committee meeting, discussion on the recommended building inspection fee changes are listed in here, inside your packet. Again, you'll see the frequency in which we've changed. Review was done with staff and our building inspection team. Right now, we're recommending change to the new residential building inspection and the commercial, and with the deck incorporating a new seventy-five dollar review fee. Answered a few questions in committee, but is there anything else I can hope?
Did a great job in committee.
Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved?
Second.
Any further questions or comments?
One question. When you say it'll still be comparable to the surrounding communities, are we higher, are we lower, are we?
Yeah, I tried to list some of the comparables in there. Not everybody charges the same units.
Yeah, sure.
So it's a.
It's not always apples to apples.
Sometimes.
Right, okay.
You have to provide an example, and then I can run it, but in general, I like to stay kind of in that middle range.
Sure.
The trend is usually five to ten years of review, so you might catch a community at the bottom of that tenure or at the top end. You know, there's some in here that are extremely high. I feel like we're right, we're right with the market.
Thank you.
Motion is made in second. Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman McConnell?
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth?
Nay.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Aye.
Under our next item, Consider Act Resolution twenty-five dash R three three one two, supporting the expansion of Interstate ninety-four in western Waukesha County. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mayor. The interesting thing that was discussed earlier is that the last major project done in Waukesha County by the DOT was the Conwalk bypass, which was constructed in nineteen ninety-five. So we're seeing a lot of issues out on the section of the interstate that travels from County Highway SS east to, or westerly to the county line. And that section was designed and constructed in nineteen ninety, or nineteen fifty-eight. I did tell staff today that I was not yet born. That's how old it is. But we're seeing a lot more, as you can see on the graph here, graphic here, that the section of the interstate we're talking about is the very top line. When you look at the numbers as far as traffic and crashes compared to the other projects that have been agreed or approved for future construction, our numbers are worse in all the major categories than any of those other projects. So the county exec had petitioned to get this into the budget, and at the very last hour, the governor vetoed it from the budget, indicating that he felt that there was another process that should be followed, and that's the process we're now following tonight, or starting tonight, or it's been in process, where the DOT has to recommend the project to the TPC, the Planning Commission. That's already been done, so that's a great hurdle to get over. They still need to recommend and move that project along, and then we eventually can get it into the state budget. If everything went very, very well with no slowdowns, we're probably looking at a minimum of ten years before this construction would start, and that's a minimum. Comes down to what funding is available. When you look at all the projects the state of Wisconsin has going on, there's a lot of big money out there. One of their projects, which is pretty much from north of Madison, probably more like the portage area when you're going up to the Dells and it narrows down, is the expansion of that. I heard that that's a six billion dollar project. So when you have projects like that that are out in front of you, it may be a while before funds get down to where we're at. And so we've got a very old section of interstate. It's not meant for the traffic that's there. One of the things that was noted at the meeting that Bank Five Nine very graciously held for this, to be discussed, that, you know, a lot of the workers that are coming into this area are coming from the west. And so we rely on good, safe transportation for them to get back and forth. When you look at the development, good example, just the one we just talked about, two hundred and ten acres developing out by the interstate, you know, it's going to be driving some traffic out there. We want to make sure that people can get in and out and enjoy our area. So I'm looking for the city to support the resolution that's here tonight, so that we can pass it on, so that all the other approving bodies in front of us can know that we're very much in support of having this happen.
Questions or comments from the council? Alderman Spiegelberg?
So if we're in such need of it here, why is that stretch-up by portage trumping us? Is it because it's on that main corridor going up to the Twin Cities, or do you have any idea?
It got put in. I mean, there, there's a lot of reasons why certain projects get approved, but. get approved, but that was one that was in order. One of the thoughts was that this area was actually being looked at, two different portions of the interstate, what we call the western half and the eastern half, and when they combine them, it put the estimated total cost, and that put us into a different category for trying to get approvals. What we're asking them to do is only look at the western portion, and that dollar amount puts us in a lower category and allows us to move forward. But it's a great question, how did this section of interstate get to have these numbers that are in front of us, and it's never been proposed? And quite frankly, if other individuals hadn't stepped up, I don't know if we'd be talking about this.
Wow, okay, okay.
So this is a resolution, council, as we talked about earlier, in protection welfare. Any further questions or comments, or Tim, if you have any comments you'd like to add? You hosted a wonderful meeting, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved, Altman-Clothe.
Second, Ellis.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Aye.
Okay, on to our next item, presentation update from the Waukesha County Center for Growth. Teresa Thriller, or Mr. Duffy, if you're gonna kick things off.
Sure, as we discussed during budget priorities, one of them is an update for the Waukesha County Center for Growth. As I indicated in that process, as well as our memo, we're in a very unique position here, regionalism or regional cooperation is fairly important, being in front of and aligned with the different organizations that are aware of things going on, especially in the aspect where we're building two hundred thousand square feet of speculative of building going on, as well as innovation and incubation. It's important for us to continue to collaborate with all those partners. So with that, Teresa's here, give the annual update of our Waukesha County Center for Growth involvement here in Waukesha.
Great, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Aldermen and women, for letting me make this conversation tonight. So the Waukesha County Center for Growth is, business model is that of shared economic development services. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit that serves the entire county. Our focus is on primary employers that have jobs that typically pay higher wages and are more likely to have benefits and, benefits like time off and healthcare. We're funded by the local municipalities, the county, and I draw a little bit of residual income off of our revolving loan fund called the Grow Fund. Staff of one person, also impacted by various cuts over the years, co-located with the Waukesha County Business Alliance. Basically, I am an extension of your business, of your economic development team, I work with Bob very closely. We provide very traditional economic development services of business retention, business expansion and attraction, financing and talent development. This slide is a little preview of what my board members will see this Friday morning. These are our organizational metrics, what doesn't get measured doesn't get done. We look at the number of projects we complete over the year, new and retained jobs, capital investment, which is of course what generates new taxes, which funds us all, and just an indication that I have eight active projects, both expansion and attraction currently in the pipeline. This is a second metric that my board will see this Friday morning. This talks about kind of more internal activities. We are on track for achieving our goal of BRE visits, business retention visits, business development assists, community assists and talent assists. Now, an assist is a measure that I bring with me from my economic development career over the years. It's basically just a tick mark, a way for me to measure some of the work that I do with companies. It might be a referral to workforce training grants, it might be an opportunity for them to increase their sales by connecting them to defense contracting opportunities or exporting opportunities. It could be a connection to Bob if they're having permitting issues. Basically, it's just a tick mark that shows this is how I helped, and this is the way that we tell that story. Now, a community assist is something that came out of last year's strategic planning. It's basically an assist for our community specifically. So for example, when the state organization has some grant opportunities for community development projects, I make sure that Bob sees those, and we chat about what might be necessary to pull certain resources together for that. And of course, as the regional economic development partner, a letter of support for the individual municipalities' projects always gets you a couple of different, couple of additional points on your application. Talent assists, the same thing, this is where I might have referred a company to WCTC for some training courses or to various organizations for on-the-job training grants or something like that. So before we dive a little more deeply into the work that I do specifically in the city of Economowoc, I wanted to remind you that economic development is indeed regional, very timely, coming after our I ninety-four discussion. So this is a heat map of where the people, where the residents of Economowoc go to work. Waukesha County is still the primary base of employers, but six hundred and thirty more residents leave the county for work than come into the county. And as you can see, that Madison to Milwaukee corridor or I ninety-four is going to be increasingly important. So when we look at traditional economic development work of business attraction, business retention and expansion, our financing tools and talent development in the city of Economowoc, we do have a couple of very interesting projects. Bob and I showed the corporate team from WISPAC those sites in Economowoc in September of twenty twenty-three, I think I had been here for about two weeks. Now they're planning to build a two-story, twenty-four thousand square foot office building to serve as their corporate headquarters there along Blue Ribbon Circle North. And I'm very interested in the Economowoc Innovation Center. This development should be a magnet to attract medical technology, biohealth and other high-tech tenants to Economowoc. I've been actively engaging with the biohealth tech hub to bring, bring more awareness and activity into Waukesha County. I'm working directly with GE Healthcare on a new initiative related to the tech hub and talent recruitment. And I'm very pleased to share that Wendy Harris, the biohealth tech hub innovation director, has accepted a position on the WCC Board of Directors. Her term with us begins January twenty twenty-six. On the BRE side, business retention side, we've done three visits with companies in Economowoc to date. At the beginning of the year, I get a list from Bob as to what companies he'd like to visit, and then I try to schedule those meetings, or generally one-on-one with the CEO or as high up as I can get. We sit down with the leaders and kind of discuss their operations, where to see opportunities, where to see challenges, and where are there opportunities for me to bring additional resources to bear to help them continue to grow in Economowoc. Also completed twenty assist relative to the city of Economowoc. And I would encourage you to read that letter in your packet from Marquise Warren of Sentry Equipment, also a board member of WCCG, along with Tim Schneider, by the way, where we were able to connect Warren, Marquise, with some talent retention opportunities that allowed him to do some funding for his engineers. WCCG promotes the city of Economowoc through online and hard copy community profiles. The page includes photos, demographics and links to community webpages, and it's now searchable where individuals are seeking information on a specific community. So this is something that when site selection consultants look at their area, they often look at the regional area first, and there they find information very specific to Economowoc that Economowoc has created, so very specialty. The revolving loan fund, the Grow Fund, is eleven point two-five million dollars currently. We use this for business expansion to create new jobs and to new, bring new capital investment, and also for affordable housing, those are the two elements that we can use this revolving loan fund for. For the first time, WCCG was able to provide a financial incentive in the form of a very low-interest loan for a business attraction project that was looking at the city of Economowoc. The project has since located in another county, but this incentive could certainly be used for future business attraction targets. The Grow Fund is also a piece of our long-term funding strategy. We recently received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from First Federal Bank, and we have two additional banks that we're talking to, as well as a list of about eight foundations. So the residual interest from the Grow Fund, we're able to pull that to cover any gap financing, any gaps in the budget for WCCG. On the talent development side, that's led by our, by my partners at the WCBA, whose Schools to Skills program has been nationally recognized as the best practice for EDOs and chambers of commerce. This program takes middle and high school students on tours to local manufacturers to expose them to careers in everything from assembly to engineering, supply chain logistics, and what it might be like to be the president of a manufacturing company in the area. After the morning tour, the class takes a lunch break and then visits WCTC or MOSE in the afternoon to explore educational opportunities, to see what career path might be in line, what'd be needed for those skills. So the Schools Skills Program served more than three thousand middle and high school students. In the city of Economowoc, eighteen students from the high school toured Ace Precision Manufacturing. And coming up in the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, that's currently being planned, we already have forty, forty kids planning to attend a trades-focused tour, and additional twenty planning to attend a healthcare-focused tour. So as you can see, the work that we do, the economic development work that we do is measurable, it has a growing impact, and we hope to see some continued support through funding so we can continue to connect you to the resources that you'll need to be successful here, including the biohealth tech hub, local manufacturers and talent resources. Have any questions?
How successful has your assists and retention been within Economowoc?
I think they've been extremely successful, I think the letter from Marquise is a great testimonial to both the retention program as well as the result of a retention program, which is connecting a company to a talent grant.
Okay, and you said that part of your funding comes from Waukesha County.
Yes.
How much of that funding, what was that dollar amount for this year? Do you know?
Oh, yes, indeed, we're going through budget issues ourselves. So I came on board here in twenty twenty-three, and at that time, the county had already had the WCCG on a scheduled reduction of funding. So that wraps up in twenty twenty-six. They have cut our budget over the years as planned, and we're down to about a hundred and fifty thousand from the county.
Okay, and so when will that end? That'll end in twenty twenty-six completely, any funding from the county?
We anticipate the county will maintain that hundred and fifty thousand dollar level.
At the hundred and fifty, okay. And, and what was the funding last year, then?
About a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Alderman Rozak.
So right now, we've got, we all pay county tax bills, so we're paying, and we're paying city taxes, and we're paying for this group. What happened to, are you familiar with what happened to Silgan here in town?
I'm sorry, with?
Are you familiar what happened to Silgan in town? S-I-L-G-A-N?
Yes, yes.
They were a manufacturing facility that left our city.
Mm-hmm.
And do you know where they went?
I believe to Waukesha, they went to a larger facility.
Yeah, to a larger facility. Would, did you, had you done retention meetings with them in the past?
Silgan was one of Barb, Bob's targets since I came on board in twenty twenty-three, we were never able to schedule a meeting with Silgan, unfortunately.
They also have a facility, I think, in Menominee Falls, too, correct? Is the city of Waukesha, Menominee Falls also members of the Waukesha County Center for Growth?
They are.
Is it typical for the communities that are all part of this group to cannibalize each other like this?
So that was not a decision that was made by the city, that was a decision that was entirely made by the company in order to be more effective. They needed a larger facility. One of the challenges that we have here in Waukesha County and nearly every community is the lack of industrial facilities. It is extremely difficult for a company to find someplace to grow locally within their own community.
So when, when you last did, and when was the last time you did an interview or this retention interview with Silgan? Was it the year before, two years before?
As I mentioned, we have not been able to get into Silgan, in spite of many requests.
And did, were we, the city ever put on notice prior to them moving, that they were moving to another competitor city, essentially?
Nope, that's not a requirement for a company to do.
Right, but did you guys know that they were moving to another?
No.
No, no clue? I mean, we don't have a lot of manufacturing here in the city.
Exactly, that's why a BRE program is so important, to try to get in and to understand the impacts, and particularly when a company needs to grow.
Well, I understand that that's the talking point, but in this instance, the BRE portion of this program didn't help us at all. I mean, we lost a manufacturer to another, you know, partner group that also pays tax money into this.
Yes, yes, and so in order to schedule a retention visit, I will email the company, call the company on behalf of WCCG. I will go through the Waukesha County Business Alliance database and see if they have an additional contacts here. I send letters, and then certainly in the case of Silgan, I ended up using the mayor's good name and Bob's good name with their permission and asked that, hey, I'm going to request a business retention visit in your name, still unsuccessful to get in the door there. Unfortunately, it's just, sometimes it happens.
It's unfortunate for us. I don't know, I'm looking at the metrics, three business retention meetings this year in the city. I'm seeing the miss, what I consider a miss on Silgan, and I continue to question the need for this program that we continue to fund. We have a full-time economic development director, which a lot of these communities don't have, and we now have a full-time marketing and, you know, resource person and page. So we essentially have a two-person full-time staff that, that is focused on tourism, marketing, development. It seems to me that this is still duplicative. I've tried to cut this out of the budget for years, I continue to think is something that we can do on our own. But I'm open to suggestion.
Rusty.
What type of lever, talk to me about the retention meetings, what type of levers do you pull to try to get businesses here, try to keep them to stay? Could you kind of give some real-life examples of how you've done that in Economowoc?
Sure, so in Economowoc, one of the companies that we speak to is not quite out of space, but they will be in five to ten years. So one of the things we, I connected them to with an organization called the WMEP, the Wisconsin Manufacturing Extension Partnership. One of their, so this is a, there's a federally funded organization, there's a branch in every state, they help manufacturers with process deficiencies, with lean training, with supervisor training. One of their core programs is plant floor layout and inventory management. So through that connection, the company was able to revise their storage space and make sure that they have manufacturing floor space to continue to grow there for the time being. They, too, are landlocked, which is a challenge for many of the cities, as I mentioned, here in Waukesha County.
So it's, in that particular, it's more connecting them with resources to change the way they're doing business and layouts and things like that?
Yes. Yeah, in order to keep them here for another ten years.
Do you have any other examples?
So another company that we connected directly to, some training resources, Bruno Independent Living, we connected them with some training resources and also some exporting opportunities and some, we helped them do some problem solving around challenges they were running into on exporting fronts. So again, they were able to increase their sales at their current facility through work that we did with them to increase their export sales. And that would have been just one of those tick marks, one of those assists.
Thank you.
Other questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for coming. It's now on to discussion, discuss and recommend the two thousand twenty-six budget. Steve, so for those in the audience that weren't here, we've gone through our budget workshops, we're doing the final, and we're talking tonight about the operating budget and some of the tweaks to that, and making sure we're all on the same, on the same page.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for tonight, the, the goal would be to address any of the items, issues raised at our workshop last Thursday night. So just in terms of reminder of where we are in the budget timeline, last week's meeting, tonight, hopefully we'll be able to resolve any open issues and draw that to a close and make a recommendation for, at the end, for adoption at the public hearing and final approval on November fourth. In terms of some of the actions that were taken at that workshop, there were motions that were, were made and approved to move twenty-five thousand from, within the tourism budget, from one initiative to another, and then similarly another six and a half thousand dollar item from one initiative to another. So those are budget neutral, and, and those changes are already kind of outlined and incorporated in an updated version of, of the packet and material that you've all worked through.
So council, if you have any questions? So council, if you have any questions on some of these items, he's going to go through them all, but if something you disagree with or have a question, please speak up right away.
Okay. The other issues that were noted, we've done some work as staff to come back and be able to respond and hopefully resolve any concerns you had around these areas, or if you have desire to make motions and make changes, that remains an option. First item, there's discussion around valley road sidewalk or where it's lacking and potential need for a crosswalk. Mark?
I can handle that. So I'd been speaking with Brian Bell, who's the responsible person for putting in that sidewalk. They had released a contract to a design firm in July to get this thing designed. Unfortunately, they also used that same firm for all the Costco work. So it got put behind. Right now, they're planning on having plans to us in probably 30 days for our review, and they plan on bidding out the project this winter for construction early next year on that sidewalk. The crosswalk portion, we met today with Jason Herzog, and we read that that's something that we'll include in our 2026 street projects. So this would be the crosswalk by Journey 21 to get them across the street toward the sidewalk extends south.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any remaining concerns on that item, or is it okay to proceed? Okay, next item, there was discussion concern around weeds and weed treatment and mowing to make sure the city is in its best light, particularly around entrance areas.
Yeah, I don't have much to add to this other than the fact of just confirming that it is in the budget. We added $5,000 last year to work in adding some of the efforts for the city to address some of the weeds in some of the areas along Highway 67, 16, and such. So we will again do that and then confirm some of the specific locations.
Do we have to get permission from the county to do that, since it's their jurisdiction? I'm asking.
We have worked with them, honestly, to, you know, address some of the things in those things. They're not all county, though I think we're talking about. Some of these are some of the state and whatnot, but we can definitely confirm with, you know, if there's efforts.
You don't see a roadblock or anything for them?
I'm guessing they won't stop us if they say that they're doing their work.
It's more the conversation of like, hey, if we can do this, can you guys do this, too? And why do we have to do it, kind of conversation?
Yeah, okay.
Then Jason, you want to talk about the mowing being the Stormwater District?
How about the copier? What am I talking about?
Mowing, Stormwater District. Alderman Rozak could ask.
Oh, sorry. I thought I was going down the list here.
You can do copiers next if you want, but let's.
I feel like, yeah, I feel like you've heard enough from me. So the Stormwater District owns some of the properties over there, the village, the HOA owns some other ones. I think the, just confirming where we're at with the program this year. I know we are contracted with our Stormwater Management Group to cut some of those ponds twice a year. I think now that the weather's turned, we will start to see that mowing, but now the idea of, does it need to be more frequent than just that? So we'll continue to work with the Stormwater District on that component and understand what the, you know, what we're even allowed to do with the Stormwater Management part of it.
Well, just, and, oh.
Go ahead.
Just to be clear, those areas are not mowed twice a year, they're only mowed once a year.
Once are ready this year.
What's that?
Once are ready this year.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I don't think they've been mowed at all this year. I don't think any of the stormwater areas around there have been mowed at all this year.
Okay.
I mean, we have been for many years on a one mowing, usually in late fall. There's areas, I think, that could use, especially areas that are like public fronting or behind people's homes and stuff, could use that maybe a little additional care. That was my request. So you could go out there if you want. None of that's been mowed this year, that I've seen, anywhere in that area.
Okay, yeah, I think I can confirm that. Like I said, the season, a lot of them are seasonal, even the ones we own as the city, we do them seasonally.
Yeah, and that's probably fine. I just, I want us to think about what we can do on some of these areas, like that are behind people's homes in my district. I mean, we have the most amount of these ponds, and some of them are right behind people's homes, and I think they could use a little extra care, you know, so. I'm not asking for an additional funding right now, I'm just saying, I think we should just see what that process would be.
It's noted as a general note.
Yeah, and then maybe next year, we address it.
I've mentioned it, being on the Stormwater District Board, is that, you know, we'll review those. We're reviewing all of them, actually, because we're being, a lot of them are being turned over.
Thank you, Jason. Thanks, Jason. Okay, was it okay to address, to close that and move on to the next topic? Okay. Another concern was raised around copier and lease costs, is there was notations or some of the detail for two different accounts within the technology fund. One was around copier lease and the other was around copier maintenance. Done some investigation, we did renew our copier leases in 2024 for a five-year term. Most of them are structured, and I haven't been through all of them in detail, but most of them are structured. We rent the machine, and due to a Gatsby pronouncement, we need to separate the lease aspect, so kind of the rental, and present that. So we capture that in the rent cost center, and that's the one ending in 530. The other one with the account ending in 340 is the utilization. So it's the copier, just the, or the financing aspect of it in the lease. In the usage, it covers all things but paper. And I'm, I did seek clarification as to whether that's fully maintained or not. I didn't get a good answer, so I think the copier maintenance may have been a poor description for the item. It's more about the consumables and the use and the paper, I'm sorry, not the paper, the copiers that are produced on those copies.
Okay.
So it's that usage costs that are captured in 340. So there's no duplication, it's just separation of the charges and how we account for them.
Thank you for the explanation.
You bet. Okay, next item raised was around funding for the Waukesha County Center for the Growth.
Bob, do you want to come up? So this was, Teresa, this was just tabled because we knew you were coming in, so it's just part of the process.
Sure, so we've had Waukesha County Center for Growth in there as our community contribution, as part of the effort. As I said, it's one of those elements that I use those resources to be able to continue to work, deal with workforce. I think, as you know, I'm dealing with tourism and economic development as one person, so having all those resources available to me is a benefit, to be able to do that, especially given all the growth that's happening here in the community. So I think it's a reasonable cost, giving the relationships that we can engage in, to be able to make that work or have that work continue to happen. We're in an area now, I think especially, where a lot of attraction will continue to happen into this community, given some of the growth and projects that are taking place. So as I said, the budget priorities, I think it's something important that we want to be part of the conversation as opposed to not involved at all.
Comments and questions for council?
What are your thoughts on it, Mayor?
My thoughts on it? Big picture, long-term, I think it's a great organization. Short-term, I'm frustrated with the Waukesha County because of the cuts that they've applied to the city, directly to the city of Oconomowoc. So that frustration is hard because we're spending $150,000 in the county, which is our taxable money, to go to an organization that actually made a few cuts and didn't even notify us. Now, that could always be sour grapes, so it's a couple different things, but you just heard we have to put in $5,000, again, not all for county roads, because they're not maintaining the roads the way they should, and they know that, but they don't have the funds. It's not because they don't want to, they don't have the funds to do it. So the question that you have as council members is, we have, it was $12,500, I think, is it? $12,500. Long game, big picture, we should stay with the Waukesha Center for Growth. Short-term, it would be nice to use that money for things that have been taken away by the county, because this is a county-run organization. So I struggle on both sides of it, and it was set up on that, and I've expressed that I also try to look at our whole community. Now we're landlocked, we have very little industrial land left, period, in the city. I think that's an area where they do some great things. I've gone to some of the meetings with Teresa, and she's spectacular, and she has connections and resources that Bob doesn't have, we don't have, when it comes to helping some of these manufacturing companies, for sure. I've witnessed it, I've experienced it, and Teresa, thank you, I appreciate you doing that. So it really comes down to what you guys want to do as a policy, because this has been a topic of discussion for five years, at least since I've been mayor. And this is probably the only time I'm frustrated, just because of what has been cut with transportation for senior center and for the removal of onsite senior dining. It was a five-day-a-week program with really no, absolutely no notice. Wonderful people at the ADRC, I've met with them, met with all of them, and basically no notice, no option, nothing. So that's a little hard to take, because we're here to represent the citizens of Oconomowoc, our residents. And so this is probably one of those items I'm conflicted with, you guys, because as a businessman, we should stay there. As a, in a short-term note, looking at cuts that are happening to us, we're now having to fund that, right? So it comes down to whether you feel the long, in my opinion, since you asked, whether you want to do the long-term game, which I think is the best business approach by far, or if there's a little pause for a while to see where things are going to go. Because Paul Farrell hit it right on the head. He said, without a small sales tax that they were going to share.
Yes.
Within Waukesha County, with the municipalities, with the residents on property tax relief, that was the only way that Waukesha County could really maintain a solvent budget without major cuts. And they're, and they're fine for 2025 and going into parts of 2026, but with that not going forward, and I'm 100% against all taxes, that's how I was raised as a kid, this was the only lever that the county had, and our county supervisors both voted against it. And now we're going to start to see it, and what we're seeing right now are small pieces, you guys. The amounts that we're talking about is really small, but what's going to happen in two, three more years? I'm not optimistic that the state's going to help. Look at what they did down in '94. So I gave you a really long answer and kind of deviated a little bit from that, Alderman Rozak, but I struggle with this one a lot, where in the last few years, I didn't struggle with it at all. I was 100% rock solid in favor of moving forward and giving those resources to Bob. Jennifer?
So just a little, I guess a little history for our two new aldermen that weren't here last year. Last year during the budget, we did vote to get rid of this, and it was, we went forward without this in our budget. And then it was donated, the funds were donated, and it was put back in, and we didn't have a vote on putting it back in. So just a little.
Two years ago.
Was it two years ago?
It was taken out. It was put back in last year.
Oh, wow, okay. I have no concept of time.
Again, in all fairness, we are a nonprofit.
Correct.
And some of the comments being made are cuts of the county, too.
Yeah.
But I understand your comment about money is coming from both entities to help support it.
And, you know, and it's, and I'm probably leaning more towards cutting it, just for little things that have been said over the course, even since Costco got approved. And, you know, I've heard you say it, I've heard Jason Gallo say it, you know, I've heard other people say it, you know, you guys kind of call it the Costco effect, that, you know, Jason, I think, has said it more, that the phone is kind of, you know, the phone's ringing, people are coming to us. So how much do we need to pay for this? You know, could we reallocate that $12,500 towards the seniors, you know, for the meals? I mean, also, I agree, there's other options, you know, whether or not we partner with the Legion or whatever it is, you know, or do we use those funds for, you know, other areas that, you know, were cut? You know, should two, three years down the road, we kind of kick ourselves, I think they'll happily take our money back and we rejoin, you know? You and Paige, I think, are a great duo. And like Alderman Rozak said, how many cities have a full-time economic develop, you know, not very many cities have a Bob Duffy.
You're right.
Menominee Falls. I don't think Brookfield does anymore. I don't know. I haven't heard.
Exactly, so, you know, why are we paying two?
Technically, the city of Waukesha has somebody in.
Yeah, so why are we paying two full-time salaries and this? It just, it doesn't feel fiscally responsible. We have, I'll be honest, this is one conversation I'm very tired of, and I would be very much in favor of cutting it.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
And I have to admit, I am very conflicted on this this year, and Bob, you know, I've been such a great proponent of this, because I understand the long-term benefit of this, and I understand the relationships part of this. But it is frustrating me, to use your word, that, you know, they're getting $150,000 from the county, they, the level down to that, but they didn't get cut and wiped out like our senior dining program did. And so that's a frustration. I guess my thought, too, is, as other people have said, that in the short term, maybe we take a pause on this and look to this again next year or the year after. It's tough. I mean, Bob, you know, I've always supported you on this, but there's just a fresh, an extra level of frustration this year.
And to respond to your component, the Costco component, we definitely have retail and those things coming. As I said in my memo, I think really the opportunity we have is to really define what's going to happen with wingspan innovation and incubation.
Innovation.
And having some of those individuals and resources available to us, as well as, again, I've been doing this a very long time. It's probably been 18 years since anybody's come to this city to build a 220,000-square-foot speculative facility. So we have that happening in our community, having some of those multiple ears on the street, you know, opportunities for people to be feeding us attraction components to fill those spaces is an advantage to us, I believe.
Rusty?
I'm looking for just like a win here, kind of the assistant things, I'm hard pressed to say that's justifiable for the cost. The wingspan developer, as you mentioned, we've, I've seen the plans for that, and it was a long time ago, even before I knew we were paying for this, they mentioned that there was going to be medical innovation, medical technology. Is the developer out searching for that without this?
Again, they're doing their marketing. Again, we've reached out to Wendy Harris, you heard, you know, she's been to this community multiple times. We did a presentation with Commercial Association of Realtors, trying to build some of that as well, but that's all part of this relationship building regionally, to be able to attract to this community.
Because I'd heard GE in the wingspan area prior to knowing about this, is that something you brought to that? I'm trying to find the tangible win to justify this cost.
The hard thing is it's.
And most of the things that are going to happen with medical technology are going to be small patents that are creations, opportunities in small pieces, as opposed to GE Medical is not moving to Oconomowoc.
Yeah, but I mean, companies are going to be putting, they're going to be leasing those spaces out and creating operations there. You know, I would assume the developer is out finding those opportunities, you know, or is it, can you say, hey, you know, this organization was responsible for filling this particular spot? I mean, if we can say, hey, this is.
Again, the biggest win for us, and Teresa brought it up, I mean, they're the ones who got the phone call from WISPAK to say, we're looking at multiple communities, would like to be in Oconomowoc, and we showed them three sites in this community. It took three years for them to make a decision to do that. So again, if you want any one win, that's it. I mean, fortunately or unfortunately, with the economy, with businesses, you know, Center for Growth, four or five years ago, helped the old Lake Country Manufacturing, I'm trying to think of what the Agglomeration Company that was over on Concord Road. to think of what the agglomeration company that was over on Concord Road, they just couldn't make it here, you know? After they tried to buy that facility and do that, that the grow fund was used to do some of those things. We had access to those, those dollars because we don't have that as a city to be able to do those types of things, so.
Karen?
We have no access to money to be able to incentivize a project, should they need it, to come here for those things, so.
Okay, so I am really on the fence about this. But when I take this down to the small dollars and you see it's like $1,000 a month, I'm, I'm just playing both sides of this. Can we say that there's a benefit to the city greater than $1,000 a month? There probably is. But we may need to make a decision tonight if we want to take a.
Or you could look at it.
Buy on this? Just a minute. If we need to take a buy on this? But if we do, I really want to come back and revisit this next year.
Are we able to reallocate the funds to providing meals for the seniors? Because if that's a hard yes, then this makes this, I would rather spend the money on our seniors this year.
Karen?
Than this.
Okay, I can answer that. We can use the money from this or we can use money from contingency to, to budget for those meals.
We need both?
We probably won't need both.
All right.
Yeah.
So, and I, Teresa, as you're. Teresa, as you're hearing us talk about this, this is absolutely no reflection on you.
No.
And this presentation, this is the first time we've really gotten some decent numbers and metrics and following through. So please don't take this personally at all. And I, I think you see the struggle that this council has. And my biggest concern is I just saw, you know, Brookfield just put a referendum for operating expenses and it failed. And they're, and they're just completely built out and look at how much building they did have. And so that's kind of the looking glass that I'm looking at it, I'm going, wow. And we no longer have that growth expansion because of our closed borders. Which was also supported by the county, just so you know.
It's tricky.
Just one item to note, and, and again, the senior meals was raised during our workshop. We didn't really highlight, I don't remember any comments made, that was at $7,500 for the 25 budget. It was increased in the 26 proposed budget that you've reviewed to $12,500. So it has had at this point, just as a, as a base in the 26 budget.
At the 7,500, did you say?
Increased from 7,500 to 12,500. So there's been a $5,000 increase in that, in that program line item in the budget.
But the $5,000 for the senior center was already there.
Correct, correct.
So what you're talking about is just onsite meals, which is very different.
And I do have a better number on that.
Okay.
Should I discuss that now?
Do you want to share that with us?
Should I discuss that now?
Do you have it?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. So on Friday, October 3rd, I got my final email from ADRC saying, and I have tried and I have tried. They deliver three meals to the Berkshire Apartments and I've been just trying to get them to do, deliver the meals for our seniors packaged to the senior center because somebody drives there anyway and it's a no-go. I have tried so hard to get through the red tape and it's a no-go. So what I'm at now is we want to budget 25 meals once a week for these people, just for the first six months of 2026, and then revisit this. But 25 weeks at $15 a meal, it's like $12 for the food, $3 for supplies, is $9,375. We don't need anything for 2025 because the first, our first four meals have already been donated and thank you to the donors for that, some have been anonymous. And we will be finding other donors for the end of 2025. We may be able to find donors for 2026, but I want to make sure that we're covered. So we may use this money and we may not. We may use some of it, we may use all of it, but my number right now is 9,375.
What does that cover? Can you get it explained that? You said 25 meals once a week?
25, 25 diners.
Okay.
Once a week for 25 weeks, that takes us six months into the year at $15 a meal.
What do we do if we don't have funding after the first six months then? So.
Well, the ADRC said they're still trying to work out something. I would love to ask for 12 months, but I, I don't, I don't know if that's feasible.
Is this, would you anticipate this being a perpetual spend?
I think we may have to if the ADRC doesn't come back. No. I mean, they're way cutting back. They, they have other sites that are potentially being cut. They're trying to regroup, they're trying to do this new restaurant model type thing. But they're sort of all up in the air with it right now.
What is the, how do people qualify for the, the meals? Do they just say, we need a meal and that's it? Is there any kind of qualification?
No, they have to qualify. And some of that is based on that they may not be able to prepare a meal for themselves. Like there are at least three widowers who cannot cook for themselves, cannot supply a meal for themselves, and we're only asking for one day a week for these people. But the other thing outside of that is this is a real cohesive group now. And they, and this is part of their social life and their emotional wellbeing here in the community. So it's, it's kind of an all-around package thing. They used to meet five days a week, you know, and now we're just asking for one day to keep this group cohesive and keep this group together.
And these are folks that aren't part of, you know, Shore Haven or any.
No.
They're separate.
No.
They're living independently on their own.
They live independently in their homes, correct? Yeah.
Well, I agree with Rusty. I think it's a much better use of our funds than the Waukesha County Center for Growth, in my opinion.
Other questions or comments about, because we're talking about two different items and I think we should always look at each item as to its merits and to the things that we don't feel are of as much value. So let's, let's circle back to Waukesha County Center for Growth and what direction do you want to go? Do you have any questions for Teresa?
I'm in favor of cutting the funding and like they've suggested, Rusty suggested, reallocating the money to the senior meals. And if there's a little extra and we need to get through the six months, then, so, you know, that's a good thing. Then we have some question.
Yeah, thank you.
So because we want to try to get this a little bit more finalized, I would like this in a form of a motion, please.
Do you want me to, or Rusty?
Or Karen, do you want to do the motion?
Jennifer, Ken.
Jennifer?
It doesn't matter. No, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to cut funding to the Waukesha County for Center of Growth, Waukesha County Center for Growth, and reallocate that $12,500 to go towards the senior meal plan that Karen has been working on.
Second. Any further questions or comments? Chaz?
I'm going to vote against the motion because we can fund both of them.
Against what?
We can fund both of them. We're able to fund both. It's not an either/or question.
And that's, and that's true.
That's true.
Right. So I think we're being disingenuous with the argument here.
What, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
What is the contingency? How much do we have in contingency? I don't, off the top of my head, remember.
About 78,000?
Well, it's, I, I got the number here, but.
Go ahead.
We have a base contingency of 73,000. We then added in the 155,000 for the police salaries that we're holding there. So the number we'd be looking at, you know, reducing down would be the 73,000 that we have in there. To date this year, we've only spent 10,000 out of the contingency.
Okay, that was my next question.
Well, and this isn't going to be an annual cost, we're saying, right? It might, it might be. It, it could be, but right now we're talking about a one-time cost. So it's great to take it out of contingency. We could also take it out of a $10 million general fund that we have. Well, but it's all part of the levy, so the contingency's within the levy. Right. And if we have to look at this as an ongoing expense, we can look at that next year. Yeah.
Or you'll probably have to look at this after more things come together, probably in April or May, because there won't be enough funds. So I think if I'm interpreting it correct, Karen, you want to be able to fund at least one meal a week. Work with the ADRC, see if we can find out. We, I did about, two months ago when I met with them, made the request that we'd be happy to beta test. They're, they're looking at having seniors going to different restaurants. Happy to do that. But I think Chaz really brought up a good point. It doesn't have to be an either/or. Now we have a motion and a second on the floor. Unless those want to be rescinded, we'll need to vote on that. But I think Chaz did bring up a good point that if there's any further discussion, let's have it now. Yeah.
We could move that money into contingency.
We could use the money for.
Use it.
Great.
We could vote again in April. Is that when we'd come up again?
Well, no, you'll need to have it now because that's going to the 26 budget, so I'll have start in January for, if you're going to do this.
So we, just to clarify, we couldn't take the $12,500, put in the contingency fund.
You could.
When this money runs out in April, we could then use that money to fund this in April?
It runs out Jan, or December 31st. Because basically donors are paying for the meals right now through the end of the year.
So we do need.
So the funds need to be in, as of Jan, first week of January.
So if we do want to fund it further, we do need to move this over to the senior meals?
No, you can put it into contingency if you want, or you can use current contingency.
So the 12,500 is in the budget now, so that's all accounted for. So if all you're looking to do, if you want to keep, continue to fund Center for Growth and you want the money for the seniors, we can look at reducing the contingency that we're showing in the budget at this time by $10,000. You know, just using your $9,300, we could reduce that by 10,000, move those dollars over into the parks area that funds the senior.
Senior program.
Senior items.
And so really what, I think Chaz is probably the best way is you need, really need to decide, do you want to fund Center of Growth in 2026? Because that money, if you say, no, you don't, then you have that funding available in 26. Or you use a current contingency.
Fun debate. But take the $12,500, put it into the, not fund the Center for Growth, put the $12,500 into the contingency.
We just don't put it in the budget.
All right. It just wouldn't be in the budget.
Wouldn't be in the budget. We, you're going to have to put something in the budget if you want to. For the senior meals, $12,500 is.
And I think if anything, if, I mean, it's all like six of one, half dozen of another, how we spend it. I think if anything, the way that we kind of did it, the way that you guys kind of suggested it, it also just kind of sends a message that, you know what, as a city, we're really disappointed in the cuts that were made by the county. So this is what we're doing. So I'm just going to say, call the question.
Yep. So I have a motion and a second. Call, roll, please.
Alderman Ellis?
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Wait. Let me state the motion. Oh, yeah. Okay. Sorry, we've been going all over the board here.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman McConnell?
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth?
Aye.
Alderman Rosak?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Aye.
Motion passes. I think hopefully Teresa, you got a, the strong message that they really want to continue to look and continue to engage with Bob for next year. But this is one year that, that we feel that we need to step back. Is that a fair, is that a fair summary, counsel?
Yeah.
So I do have one question. If someone comes up and wants to fund it for the city, what is, what do you want to do?
What, fund what for the city?
Our membership with the Waukesha County Center for Growth. I don't anticipate it happening again, but I think why not just talk about it now so you can make that decision?
Well, the way, my position on it, when we voted this down two years ago and it was put in without us being consented on it, I mean, there was a vote on the floor to eliminate the funding and it passed like 5, 3, or 6, whatever it was. When it was funded outside of us, I think it still should have come back for a discussion on us because it's our budget. I mean, ultimately, we're making the decision for our constituents, whether people agree with it or not. So I think if, if someone's going to come in out and fund it, we need to know, at least be put on notice that it's happening.
So is the request, if somebody makes the offer to fund it for the city, you want it to come back to this body? Is that what you, for, for a vote?
Yeah, it's just a donation.
Okay. Okay. I just want to be clear so we don't end up in a position where there's misunderstanding.
Well, I mean, the way it happened last time is there was a vote to cut it and there was no line item for it. And then money was donated and the line item was added without approval of this council and this body. If we amend a budget, it takes a two-thirds majority after a budget's entered. And that was, that didn't happen.
There was no line item budgeted and they paid the Center for Growth directly.
Directly.
We didn't add a line item in the budget.
We didn't pay it.
But it got added again in 2025.
Like as a donation for us. I mean, if, if somebody, I guess.
Just I want to clarify that it wasn't, it wasn't, we, they, it wasn't.
That's a, that's a little bit more.
Trying to contribute, didn't give money to the city and then we did it.
That's a little bit more nuanced.
They actually made the payment to the Center for.
On our behalf, essentially.
On our behalf. It didn't go through the city.
What the organizations do to fund Silver Street.
Yeah.
Summit doesn't pay Silver Street. Aurora pays Silver Street.
But when it comes to donations, like for example, when we fundraised for Gobble, the canine, that money was raised, but we still had to approve having Gobble. Gobble didn't just show up one day because the money was raised or it was donated. So, I mean, granted, I mean, we're talking about a dog and a, you know, two separate things, but still, something is donated to the city, we don't just accept it.
So I think, I think I've heard you loud and clear, Mark. Are you good with that?
Yeah, I, but I do, if we're done with that item, I want to just clarify, so the $12,500, we want to move all that into the appropriate account for the senior meals.
Correct, correct.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, no, I just, just wanted, just to clarify that, so we'd have that.
Okay, captured. Thank you. I did also, so there's one item left on, left on this list from our workshop, and I've got a few slides to kind of walk you through, kind of, there are a couple of questions asked and I hopefully have that organized in a way. This is a bit of an eye chart, but one of the first questions asked was, how do we have over 400,000 fund balance? Why do we have that? So I wanted to kind of tell the story, if we look back over time and I went back to 2019, and you can see that at that time, we did have a fund balance exceeding 400,000. And from appearances, we budgeted, up top, I have the number of households, the charge that we were charging to residents for garbage collection services, and then the average charge, this is a calculated value, not necessarily what we were being billed by Johns, but when we look at the households divided by the total cost that we had to pay, it's a calculated number. So we had, we were charging, collecting $150, the service was costing us 168. So we did, we did run a deficit of 112 and we did bring that fund balance down over the course of several years. So I want to kind of point that out. We did have a structural imbalance and I presume that was how it was budgeted for a similar reason. But it's just that, it's a presumption. Couple other items I wanted to point out. The interest line item, and I'd intended to highlight this to make it easier for you to see, horizontally here at the top of the page, if I can get the mouse to respond. In 2019, if you'll recall, interest rates for deposit money were running about 2.4%. That held true up until about the first quarter of 2020 when COVID hit, and then by June of 2020, they went to near zero. So you can see that track happen in our interest revenue line here within this fund, just as an example. That happened for all of the city's deposits and investments. So by 2021, that 7,920, 2020, most of that was in the first quarter. 2021, we, we ran lean and interest rates began to recover in 2022. And then you can see in '23, and that's stepped up considerably. They've, they've again fallen back. So if you look down again at the bottom line, '23, '24, when interest rates recovered and were strong, we had outperformance. So in terms of where did the 400,000, it's those two years of surplus operating in this fund is, is really how we got back up to that 400,000 or exceeding 400,000 level. So I, I wanted to kind of walk you through that evolution to help kind of set the stage. I, I don't believe we set out intentionally to do this. And as an example, 25 budget, we did budget. And again, we're, we're conservative with that interest line. We don't want to become reliant on something won't happen with interest rates and then end up with an empty cup, if you will. So acknowledging that conservative assumption on interest revenue, we did budget to use 41,000 of fund balance in '25. Since our last workshop, I did update that estimate. I want to say in your packets, this number was 6, 7,000 positive was the estimate. I think interest will come in, get a little stronger than, than what that initial estimate was. We also are looking at the number of households. We've got more households that, that as they, as building permits are completed and they take occupancy. And even for one or two or three months late in the year, we do collect a prorated fee for those months of service for garbage collection. So long and the short, we're going to end '25 a little bit more favorable than when you last saw it in your packet. The original preliminary '26 budget, again, was budgeting to use 47,000 worth of fund balance. So I've done kind of the walkthrough. So where it ended, it began for the year. And then based on the, each year's operating surplus or deficit, where did we end up for that year? So for '25 estimate, you'll see we're taking the '24 ending that estimate with the 18,000 surplus. It's looking like a little above 500,000 is, is current estimate. Now, I've, I've added one element, the bottom line to the screen, because I, I think the, the next question that was asked was, what should the fund balance be? And, and my answer for you is going to be predicated on this last line. It should be proportional to the cost, the annual cost of the service that this fund is created to, to deliver. So we can see that that's varied and that's, that's the fund balance is a proportion of the expenditures for the fund. So it's, it's been as high as 44%. It's been as low as 24. Right now, under the '26 budget, we're, we're bringing that down to 28%. So with that in mind, I'm going to move on to the next slide. And I'm looking at just, I've tried to make this a little bit more visible and simplified. This is just the preliminary '26 budget that was in the materials that you looked at at your last workshop. So here's that same 40,000 budgeted deficit. I'm introducing this concept of target reserve at 20%. This being a special revenue fund, it's created just to deliver this service. To the extent that something happens, it should have its own first line of defense without having to then rely on the general funds unassigned fund balance. So 20%, it's a smaller number than the '25 that we currently have as the, the fund balance policy for the general fund. But I think it's appropriate to give that instead of a percentage, another, another form of context. That's like two and a half months worth of service. So if you think working capital, if you think about different types of measures or context to try to, to try to frame that in, personally, I feel that's a reasonable level. So if, if 20% should be kind of the, the target reserve, then the next line I added here is what's, what's above that 20% target? So I've, I've tried to frame that here from a, from a framework to kind of walk through and view the same, the same information through that lens. So '25, if, if my estimates are accurate and we end above 500, when we roll together the preliminary '26 budget, that would leave us about 180,000 surplus above that 20% target level. That's at the, the proposed 210, the preliminary budget, '26 budget, 210 was the, the proposed fee increase. Just rolling that and extending it out one more year. In '26, and I, I don't think we touched on this during the workshop, Jason did earlier in, in tonight's agenda, talk about we, we have a contract through June. Beyond June, we don't have a contract. So I'm, I'm confident we'll be able to work out something amenable to everybody. Right now, the '26 budget, from a cost standpoint, we've assumed a 5% increase in that because we don't, we don't have a contract. We don't have a number. So that same level, if you extend that 210 fee level out, that would consume 111,000 worth of fund balance and would bring us down to about 51 above that threshold. Okay? And again, that 20%, it's relative to the total cost of service. So as your cost of service goes up, so would that, that target reserve level. Okay? You asked us also to look at, is there a way we could offset the estimated tax increase to the average home of $19? So with our mill rates, we, we looked at a $455,000 home would, would approximate a $19 increase to the tax bill for that average home. I've updated this '26 budget column for that scenario. So the fee, instead of 205, which is this year's current value, we're dropping that down $19 to 186. That would consume 201,000 of fund balance and would bring us down just above that 20% level in one year. That would achieve what I think the goal was in, in looking at this as an avenue. The, the next thing I want to kind of show is though, if you look then at what happens in '27, if that burned 200,000 worth of fund balance, if you don't then right-size that and try to bring it to equilibrium, you're going to continue to burn at that same, that same rate. So you, you need to right-size and bring that in equilibrium. If we were to bring that back up to 205, it would still burn almost 150,000 worth of fund balance because costs would, the cost for that '27 level of service would go up. Click the button again. I looked at different types of pricing out for that second year, the '27 year. In $5 increments, we would, to get back above that 20% fund balance threshold, it would take a, a 27-year cost of $230 per household. So we, we could definitely do that one year, step back in, in the fee charged. But, but in that second year, it's kind of a, if, if, in my past roles, and, and tell me if it's, if it's different here, but the, the guiding role has been no extreme increases or decreases. Try to smooth so that as households budget for themselves, it's, it's something incremental. It's not, not wide swings up or down. So I, to, to try to respect the request, I, I tried to model and paint that picture here and kind of show what future decisions would look like based on that. Wasn't asked, but, but given what was in the preliminary in this, I did add one more scenario. And, and that's if we hold the 2025 price unchanged, same assumptions for costs, 5% for the second half of the year. The contract ends mid-year. So that would, instead of the 47,000 with, with the $210 fee, it would, it would increase the use of fund balance up to about 80,000. Bring us down still about 147,000 above that 20% reserve level. In '27, if you hold that again, it would bring us down kind of right around that level. Again, I ran other scenarios. If '27 then went to 210, you're kind of coming up to that equilibrium. So hopefully that helps set kind of range and some of the dynamics of some of the variables that you can change. But that, that was the material that I prepared to try to, to respond to that, that concern with the
Kevin?
So thank you. Thank you for that. That's, wow, that's a lot of numbers there. Tremendous amount. Help me understand the 20%. What, what is your basis for that? Was that just you picked it out of the sky and said, let's look at 20%? Or was it because of a certain fee structure that we definitely needed?
I, if, if you look in the context again, there, there's no, there's no hoils, rules for cards sort of thing for special revenue funds. It's prudent, prudence, it's financial planning. The city for, it's on a, on a sign, or the general fund has set a 25%
Right.
Target.
Correct.
If you look at Moody's for AAA-rated municipal community, 35% would be their index is kind of the cutoff between AAA and the next lowest credit tier. So that is for all of kind of the general fund, the operations and municipal government. This is a little bit more limited. So I felt it appropriate. And again, it's, it's a subjective thing. There's no hard and fast objective criteria or yardstick standardized using a unit of measure. I thought 20% because this is the first line of defense. You still have the fallback and support of the general fund unassigned fund balance. So if, if things really come off the, the rails, if you will, you've got some coverage here. We don't provide our own service. We don't have capital equipment that we may need to replace where that might justify a larger value. This is contracted stuff. We have a good relationship. I think 20% subjectively is a reasonable number.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Alderman Rosick.
The other backdrop to this, regardless of what we decide to do here tonight, is because it's a fee, you can always just increase the fee the next year, right? So even if you were to use more of the quote-unquote surplus fund or more of the targeted reserve for a year or two, you can always raise the fees again the next year.
Yes.
So there, there's not ever really, in my opinion, the way this garbage fund works and the way you've evaluated it, we should never be in a situation where we're going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars in the negative. Because you can over, you can correct the next year as necessary. And some of these numbers too are speculative because we don't know what's going to happen in the years. I appreciate you looking at it. My proposal was originally to at least look at, can we offset the, the average home price increase in taxes with this very large fund? I don't think it's a, it's a, probably appropriate to do that, given the numbers you've shown us. What I, what I, what I think we should do, and my, my alternative that I, I said on Thursday was, let's not at least look to increase it this year. The worst tendency of government is just to keep taking the tax money or the fee, whether you need it or not. We clearly don't need to raise it from 205 to 210. So why take it? Let's use some of the surplus funds now, keep it steady at 205, especially when we're renegotiating the contract and we don't know what that's going to look like next year. So that's going to be my suggestion. I'm open for discussion, but I, I think that's a, a wise, conservative thing to do.
Steve, can you show the slide where you show the 205 for the next two years?
There we go. Other comments from council?
I'm in agreement with that. Keeping it at the 205 for this next year.
So I would need a motion?
I'll make that motion. I don't know if that's going to be a cut of the garbage fee then in the proposed budget. I guess that's maybe the motion is to cut the, the garbage collection fee from 210 to 205.
Correct. Second. Any further questions or comments? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Close.
Aye.
We have no staff reports. Thank you very much, Steve. Great job.
Good job. Thank you.
And I really love the detail of your analysis. Any comments from Alderman this evening? With no comments from the mayor, we're going to move into closed session into room three. The closed session is confidential. The purpose of the meeting is considering financial, medical, social, and personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to. These such histories or data are involved in such problems or investigations pursuant to Section 19.851F. The council reserves the right to adjourn in closed session and reconvene into open session for purposes of potential additional discussions if they so choose. I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session in the room next to us.
On the room next.
Second.
Call, roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Close.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be convening next door in closed session. And unless council wants to come back into open session, we'll close the common council meeting after the close of closed section.